On our agenda. Voting in progress. Agenda continuance modifications, Mr. Lozinski, are there any? None. Okay. We have next up on the agenda is approval for planning board meeting minutes of April 12th, 2023. I just wish to remind the board, there were a number of us that were not present for that meeting, so we won't be voting on the minutes. But I will ask if there's any changes, modifications, or corrections to the minutes. All right, hearing none. Okay. Is there a second? All right, motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And abstaining.
Abstain. Okay, motion carries. Great. Next up, applicant Court Chappell of the Squire, request for an advisory opinion to town council to amend the zoning ordinance, Article six, Section C, non-standard development. Okay. Mr. Chappell, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Just as a little bit of background, you are here because...
You just state your name and address.
Court Chappell, law offices at 171 Chase Road, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. And you're here tonight because whenever someone moves to amend a zoning ordinance, it goes to the town council and the town council decides that. But it also gets submitted to your planning department and they make a recommendation. And specifically by our ordinance, it comes to you, the planning board, to hear whether or not you have anything to add or subtract or any considerations for it. This is not a controversial change. This is really simple. For those of you that have been in front of a zoning board, what happens at the zoning board is that there are things called grandfathered uses. That just means in 1964, when someone took a pen and swat and said this is going to be commercial and this is going to be residential. If you were a residential in a commercial zone, you're grandfathered. If you were a commercial in a residential zone, you're grandfathered. Both our ordinance and the state enabling legislation says that you're allowed to stay, but here's the rules if you want to enlarge. So the types of buildings we're talking about, specifically in this case, my client, Eileen Chernoff, she owns the house directly across from 15 Point Road in Park Avenue. When you get to Point Road, all the houses from there to the bridge are all single-family residences. What you may or may not know is there are there's owned commercial along Park Ave until you get to her house. Her house is the last commercial lot, but hers is occupied by a resident and so is her neighbor to the south. So there's two people there that are single-family residences on a commercial lot. If someone goes to put a deck on, or in this case, a garage on, our ordinance says you can modify a non-conforming use by special use permit. But if you modify, you must, you have to meet the dimensional requirements of the zone. So it's a special use permit in front. But you also, if you're going to be nine foot from a property line, when it says 10, you can't do it because we can't grant you a dimensional variance. We can only grant you a use variance. So that's every house on East Main Road. It's a residential house and a commercial. Other ordinances, including like Little Compton and Tiberton, they say that's a pretty good rule for a commercial and a residential. If you have a commercial use in a residential, you shouldn't be able to modify it, except or enlarge it, except by special use permit and no variances. We don't want you any closer than the rules. But if you are a residence in a non, in a commercial or a residential in an industrial, not as big of a deal. So we give the zoning board power to say, not only can you grant a special use permit, but if you think we meet the criteria for dimensional variance, it's practical, it's the least relief necessary, we can allow you to be one foot closer to the lot line or whatever variances. That's all that is. We took the ordinance that said you can amend a non-conforming use by special use permit, but no variances. We amended that. If it's a residential in a different zone, you can amend it by special use permit and the zoning board has authority to grant a dimensional variance, if and only if they see fit. I believe Lee is going to tell you that the planning board agrees with the recommendation. And I will tell you that this came because I was in front of the board. It wasn't always enforced, quite frankly. The enforcement of some of the provisions really depend on who's interpreting the ordinance. And it was certainly enforced on the night that Eileen Chernoff was before the board and after it. Mr. Borden, who's a member of the board, has told me he's actually, is probably one of our senior members of the zoning board, going to be to the council and say, I actually encouraged Court to do this because this makes sense. We feel bad that you can't have a deck if you're a non-conforming, even though you're a residence in the middle of a... I mean, all the houses, quite frankly, around her, on her side of the street are residential. So I don't believe it's controversial, but it goes. If you give a positive recommendation and join your planning department on that positive recommendation, then I go back for a public hearing. Everybody gets advertised and the council will make a decision whether to make that change. Really, as much as that.
Ms. Hitchens, was there any, anything out of the planning office on this particular item?
For the first time, Court and I do agree.
It's not the first time.
There are many times, Court, and I do see eye to eye on things and planning staff did actually work collaboratively with Attorney Chappell in working on the proposed language together. It was Court that had the time and the opportunity to submit this. We thought this was the quickest way for, to set the tone and the language to the town council for his applicant. And it's not, he referenced his, his client as Ms. Chernoff, but I think he's had some other similar issues. So we did work with Attorney Chappell in creating the language. We have no objections as staff and I will let Attorney Gavin speak for himself, but he was in support of the proposal as well.
Yes, Mr. Solicitor.
I have no, I have no issues.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up for any public comment. Anyone in the audience has any discussion points for this petition?
No, this is, this is to change the zoning ordinance to allow anybody in town who has a building on a non-conforming lot to be able to go to the zoning board and ask to build something.
Yeah, you, excuse me, if you're going to speak, you got to come up. You got to, you got to come up and state your name and be in front of the dais so we can capture it for the record.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Richter and I live on Willow Lane and also I have a home on Turnpike. 9395 Willow and 141 Turnpike.
Thank you. Just could you state for the record what, what your issue is or?
So I was just curious if we're going to kind of blanket the town with changing the zoning or enforcing zoning in a different way, shouldn't this go through the town planner?
It, it should. We just...
And you agree on it?
We just had a...
And so is this, is this for a specific garage or?
All it does is you're a builder, right? So if, if a client comes to you that happens to have a home on East Main Road in a commercial zone and wants to put a deck, the current law says he can ask, but if he needs a one-foot variance, he can't get it.
I understand.
And now he'll be able to ask for it. Whether you get it or not, you just have to be able to ask for it. It gives jurisdiction to the zoning board to determine on a case-by-case basis whether it's practical. It doesn't change the fact that if you have a commercial non-conforming use and you want to make it bigger, you still need what's called a full use variance, which is a much harder standard. So it's really just kind of telling the residential people that we're going to treat your house like a residential lot. We're not going to treat you like a cancer in a commercial zone like we would a commercial and a residential zone.
So we're talking about a house on Park Avenue?
We're talking about an ordinance in general. I was just explaining to the board that the reason I'm here is because this issue reared its head and a client of mine was unable to go forward as written. So I talked to the planning board and said, this is probably one of those things when we rewrite the zoning ordinance, we change. I'm going, you can wait as a client, you can wait for that to happen or you can ask, I'm going to go do it. But are you going to object? Because if you're going to object, I'm probably not going to fare so well. What do you think? And the collaboration was generally that this is a mechanism to get it done maybe sooner and on my dime, not the town's dime, to get it something that will eventually be done, but sooner, so my client can avail themselves of it.
The only thing that, that threw up a red flag for me was that right across from 41 North, there's no parking. And the boat ramp that's at the Stone Bridge, there's no parking. And I'm wondering why he has a client that's building a garage to get, you know, for her own parking on her own lot. And does she have a dock?
No, she was, this is across the street.
Does she have a dock?
This is not about a specific application.
Wondering.
You, you got, wrong line of question there.
But she just...
Yeah.
He has no garage now.
Okay.
It happened to be for a one-car garage. It just was one of those things where you needed a variance.
We, we've registered your... Do you have anything else to say, Mr. Richter?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Is there any other members of the audience that wish to speak? Lee, is anybody online?
There are some people online. If there's anybody online that would like to virtually comment, please raise your hand so I can elevate you to talk. None noted.
Okay, hearing none. What's the, what's the, Mr. Chappell, anything else?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'll make a motion. I guess we wanted to give an advisory, a positive advisory opinion.
Correct. So that's, that's, that's the motion on the table. Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Harding, Ms. Wilson. A call for discussion on the motion? I'm going to call for a vote on the motion. I think it was in the packet. Yeah, it was in the packet.
But you, we, we could...
We can certainly do that.
Specify to the language, to the suggestion, change language in the package with the paragraph.
What, what?
One A and B.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we, why don't we enter? Why don't we enter this memo dated April 18, 2023 as exhibit one? Into the record. Can I get a motion to make this exhibit one? Is there a second on that motion? All right, Mr. Harding, Ms. Wilson, we got a motion made in second to accept Mr. Chappell's letter into the record as exhibit one. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's get, well, we still got to get back to the second motion that was in abeyance, which was a favorable recommendation to the town council on non-standard development. Mr. Harding made the motion, Ms. Wilson, seconded. Any discussion on that motion? And I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item four, applicant JPS Construction Design Owner, Breakwater Property Group LLC, AP 58.
Breakwater is number four.
Four? Mine shows four.
I have, I have Breakwater as four.
I do too.
Lee, is that, is that the one that's posted?
Number four is applicant JPS Construction. Owner is Breakwater Property. It is an advisory opinion to the zoning board. It is JPS, these
Okay.
young people right here.
Miss print. Yeah, it must be a misprint, Dave. I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Harding is recusing himself for several reasons.
Before we get started, Leon, do you have an extra agenda that we can give to Dave? He's got the wrong agenda in his package. Thank you. Okay. JPS Construction and Design.
How you doing? I'm Jamie Stebbin, owner of the property at 1046, 1048, 1050 East Main Road, and I own JPS Construction Design as well as Design House and Breakwater Property Group. We're looking to put up an additional building on the property and we are seeking a special use permit as well as a lot coverage, overage. And Sue from my team at JPS Construction Design can kind of go over the aspects and the numbers of lot coverage and where the building's going, dimensions. Essentially, the building's going to be used for storage for the businesses to take in deliveries and store them until they're needed at projects and potentially some light carpentry work in one of the garage bays.
Okay. Could you just state your name and address for the record?
So we're coming before the planning board to seek approval, support, pre-application approval before we go before the zoning board. The main reason we have to do that is the building we're adding is over 30% of area of the existing buildings. Right now, there are three buildings on there that total four, seven, oh, seven square feet. The new building we're adding, which is 44 by 82, which includes the eaves, because that's how we have to calculate it for lot coverage, is the area is three foot, 3,608 square feet. So we're over the 30% mark, which is why we before you. We have to go to the zoning board because we need a special use permit. We're allowed in the district, the C1 district, it's permitted with a special use permit to have a storage and to have a light workshop. And in the information I provided, it gives you the sections in the, in the code that allows that. We also are over lot coverage. The only reason we overlot coverage is because in Portsmouth, we have to include all the paved areas. The actual buildings, including the new one, is only a 12.6% lot coverage. But once we add in all the paved areas, the parking areas, it goes up to, I think it's 46.8%.
Anything else?
Any questions I can answer?
I, just when you cite light carpentry, it comes across as, I don't know if it's a marketing term to make it sound like lower decibels to a budding neighbors. Or what do you mean by light carpentry?
So we do built-ins and millwork in a shop currently on another property I own in Warren. And the thought is that we move over some space, but it's not a full-time mill workshop. It's two guys at max and not on a regular basis. Sometimes they're...
Not doing any carpentry on the site now in the existing building?
No. So we may be doing some built-ins, millwork, and then transferring those to a site, site, and then doing the installation on site.
Then I guess otherwise, I almost have to give you credit because my, my question was more towards, it was going to be more towards, I guess, the planners thoughts on, you know, we're nearly doubling the allowable coverage and wanted to kind of ask about consistency with the comprehensive community plan and where we've had variances before set precedent where we've gone over this. And then I read a couple pages in and, and you've, you've laid out a number of those examples.
Yeah, and the confusing thing is the, the zoning code actually states the fire, the fire code states that in chapter 189, that fire lanes have to be on, they cannot be on compacted gravel. And we met with the fire chief and he said absolutely not because, you know, we were thinking part of it, we could do gravel, but he said no. So to get his support, we have to make it all a solid surface.
So you, you could do a solid surface and still be pervious. It would bring you closer. You'd still be over the number.
Yeah, even existing.
You'd still have to be before the board, if I run the numbers right.
That's correct. We still, even existing is over when I included all the lot, all the existing paved areas. We're over.
So I, I guess my, my question, I, I guess would be more directed to planning. It just, and this is sort of broader to the, to the topic is, you know, I would normally be pro-business, but then, you know, we've, we've got ordinances to follow. And, you know, get density concerns over time and compromising that. But we already have sort of precedents where we exceeded that on a number of occasions.
And if you look at my, in, in the package I gave you, and I did lot coverage calculations of some of the surrounding buildings, and you'll see they're at 95%, 67%, 67%.
I understand what you're saying.
It's even higher than ours.
Absolutely within that. It looks like you're double, but wow, you're, you're much lower.
Yeah. And the actual buildings, even with the new building, we're only at 12.6% and we allow 25%.
And that's why I gave you credit because you tackled my, my question before I asked.
Thank you. My boss.
No, I just, so yeah, so it's more towards the town. It just feels like we, we have certain things like this where we have maybe no teeth because of past sins, because I, you know, I acknowledge the president's this as well. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts to that.
Anything to add, Leah?
I'm trying to share my screen so everybody can see what you folks are looking at. I, I have to compliment the applicant in terms of the overall design and that the aesthetics are, are really in keeping with the surrounding area. The, the roof is kept really low. It's in keeping with the surrounding area. It's really tucked behind the, the, the property where the property is like an L-shaped and it's really kept behind some proposed nice landscaping. We did at a TRC meeting, look at this and the only comment was again from the fire department, so they have appropriate turnaround. And again, the applicant has made those adjustments so fire apparatus can get in and get out. There was a comment about putting up some sort of chain gate, gate at the Joann Ave dead end, so that couldn't be a cut through. And I believe we were amenable to that.
Yeah, so right now there's currently maybe three or four boulders there. I guess the previous owner probably put them there to prevent people from coming through, but I guess one option for the fire department could be access through that point and we just have it chained up. Obviously, their main concern is just backing up and having, they certainly don't want to back up onto East Main Road. So that's why we created that kind of little hammerhead turnaround for them. That the current location where the building is proposed is all parking lot currently. It's just not asphalted, but it's all processed gravel that I can promise you is not very permeable. I see the water build up when, when it is raining, so. And I'd be just as happy with crushed stone there as that entrance, but it's, it sounds like they're pretty adamant about the paving, so.
So just to be clear, the, the fire department, did they recommend a locked gate or what did they recommend?
Almost like a Knox box.
Knox box.
They would be the only ones that would have the ability to go through Joann in case of an emergency.
So, so that's a recommendation.
A recommendation.
Was, was that prior to us creating the turnaround or?
It was almost like an either or.
Yeah, okay.
But it would not be to have the ability for the general public to get onto Joann.
Yeah, I, I, my own personal opinion is I think we probably would want to make a recommendation for a locked gate because you could have vehicles parked in the turnaround area at some point and it would impede their access. That's all. Any other questions, Mr. Divitz?
I think I'm good. Thanks.
Any over here? I, I did have one other question and I, I share Ms. Hitchens' comment. I do like the design of the building. I know we didn't have to go to the design review board, but I, the, the sheets that you submitted, the concept elevations, would you be willing to go on record that that is, that is actually the, the design that you're looking to build?
Yeah, so the, the intention is not to make this look like an industrial tradesman center style building. Two of the other three buildings have a nice cedar impression vinyl. We want it to be dressed up. We're in the business of design.
Sure.
And we want it to basically blend in with the other buildings. The front building, the oldest, has, still has a wood natural cedar jingle on it. But when that goes, I'll probably end up replacing it with the same size. So all four buildings, you know, kind of coexist and look nice together.
Thank you. And then the other question I had was, it looks like you have a, a letter in the package from Northeast engineers and consultants. So you, you determine that the existing septic can, can handle the two bathrooms that you're going to have in there?
Yeah, so we currently actually have two septic systems on the property and they're both kind of oversized for the needs that we have. So adding the two bathrooms is not an issue. And other utilities, the town actually has a six-inch water main that goes through the property that we can tap into, talk to the fire department. And I've also met with National Grid out there to make, there's a pole right on the back of the property that we can bring power in from. So I think on the utility standpoint, we're in very good shape.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Any questions from the planning? Good? Okay.
I'm very comfortable with that.
All right, I'm, I'm going to open it up to the audience. If there's anyone in the room that wants to speak to this petition. Is there anyone online, Leah, that wants to speak to this petition?
If there's anybody online that would virtually like to say something, please raise your hand and I can elevate you.
Okay, hearing, hearing none. What is the, what's the pleasure of the board? And this is a request for an advisory opinion to the zoning for an expansion of existing building to be usable storage and a workshop for carpentry and a variance for lot coverage. So this is an advisory opinion.
I guess I'll make a motion for a favorable advisory opinion to zoning regarding expansion of the building be used for storage and workshop for carpentry. Putting the variance for lot coverage as proposed with the, we, we want to incorporate it.
The Knox box.
And the Knox box, incorporating the fire department's recommendation for the Knox box, lock gate.
And, and that we require the applicant, we would encourage the applicant require the zoning board to adhere to the design standards that are already shown on the conceptual elevations.
Adding, adding that, adhering to the design standards as presented package.
Got your, got your motion, Mr. Divitz. Do we have? Mr. Garso seconds. Okay, the motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay. Next up on the agenda, applicant 1200 West Main Road LLC, owner P&amp;G Realty LLC, AP 44 lot 7 and 8, 1200 West Main Road, request for a modification to the approved master plan to refile the major land development as a planned corporate development. This is continued from the April 12th, 2023 meeting. But before I let Mr. Jackson speak, under the advice from the planning department and for clarity and transparency reasons, this application is, the original application was officially withdrawn and this is a completely new application for planned retail service development that was, that was continued from April 12th. Is that correct?
Correct. The, the modification application. We're not obviously withdrawing the approved master plan that's been in existence since 2021. So the original application we submitted to modify that, we've withdrawn and replaced it with the application that's before you this evening.
Perfect. You can, I can start, sir. Perfect, you can, I can start, sir.
Thank you, uh, Jay Russell Jackson, Miller Scott Holbrook and Jackson, one twenty-two Turow Street in Newport. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and owner. Um, as you may recall, this matter was, uh, before the planning board originally back on October thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. For approval of a master plan for retail service planned unit development. Um, during the hearing, a number of abutters voiced their concerns about the project. Uh, primarily relating to flooding that they've been experiencing on West Passage Drive for a number of years. Due to runoff from the subject property and from, uh, the Cotta farmland. Uh, the planning board did grant master plan approval. Uh, with the condition that the applicant address and mitigate the negative offsite stormwater impacts to a butters. So since that time, uh, my client Greg Coe, the applicant, has spent. A tremendous amount of time and energy working with his project engineer Lynn Small. As well as the, uh, owner of the property, Mr. Russo. Uh, and the owner of the adjacent farm, Dave Cotta, through his attorney Court Chappelle. Try and figure out a path forward which is sensitive to the property owners on West Passage Drive and still allows for a viable project. The result of that work is the modified plan proposal that is before you this evening. I will highlight some of the, uh, important changes since, um, uh, in relation to the master plan that was approved back in October of twenty twenty-one. First, the overall project has been reduced in size and intensity. Lots number seven and eight will no longer be merged. The planned unit development will take place exclusively on lot number seven. And lot number eight will continue to contain a single family residence. We are proposing that there will be an administrative subdivision which will transfer approximately five thousand square feet. From lot number eight to lot number seven. We're doing this so that lot number seven will have the minimum of two hundred thousand square feet of land area. The planned unit development proposal on lot number seven will now be for a planned corporate development. As opposed to a retail service development. The overall number of buildings as part of this has been reduced from six to five. And most importantly, this modification has allowed the applicant to dedicate most of lot eight to stormwater management. The condition to mitigate the stormwater runoff issues for a butters is being accomplished. By creating an initial retention area on the Cotta farm. Which then provides for water migration into a series of retention basins on lot number eight. Overall, the proposed modification to the existing master plan approval represents a plan which is less intense than originally approved. And specifically provides a conceptual drainage plan. Developed in collaboration with Mr. Cotta, which mitigates the flooding issues for the residents of West Passage Drive. From the applicant's perspective, this is a better plan than the one that was already approved by the planning board. Having approval of the modified master plan is important to my client. Because it will allow him to proceed with some confidence before incurring the significant expense of fully engineering the stormwater solution. Lynn Small, the project engineer is here and she can go through, uh, with some more detail, a description of the plan, the changes. And most importantly, a description of the stormwater management system that she's come up with. And for the time being, I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise Lynn Small is here and ready to go.
Any questions for Mr. Jackson? Hi, is Mr. Chappelle still in the room? Court, could you just verify that before we proceed that Mr. Cotta is, is okay with the plan as presented?
Uh, Court Chappelle on behalf of Dave Cotta. Though I can certainly verify that there have been extensive meetings and Mr. Jackson and Mr. Coe have been. Uh, extremely cooperative in trying to find a solution. If you remember, there was a bunch of water that traditionally ran across the farm. That ran across the Russo property and a number of years ago, Mr. Russo basically built a dam. That dam created a pond that I think Lynn Small will tell you is a couple of acres in the corner of the property. And virtually ruined two acres of farmland. Mr. Cotta being cooperative was trying to work with the developer to say. I get it that God put the water on my land, which that's where it starts, but it used to go there. The solution can't be just to have the beaver dam it and, and create a lake. So let's create something that compromises, that uses some of your land to solve the problem and some of ours. And they have clearly dedicated a fairly large piece of land between the abutters that will not only act as kind of a buffer. But also, subject to us reviewing the final plans, it's going to take a lot of that water. And now minimize the size of the pond that's going to be triangular shaped in the corner. We have kind of agreed upon triangle that we're going to let that occupy. And we are waiting for the final design to make sure it's in that. But there's surely a good faith effort going on to try to solve these water problems. That would hopefully benefit us, West Passage who's taking the brunt of it if we open a dam up. And, you know, the developer of this property.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions for Mr. Chappelle from the board? Okay, Mr. Jackson, you can proceed.
Uh, thank you. I think Lynn Small's ready to make a presentation regarding, again, the changes to the project. And, um, give a description of the conceptual stormwater management system she's come up with.
Good evening, Lynn Small, Northeast Engineers, Sixth Valley Road, Middletown.
Um, so you're going to be testifying for the engineering, could we get a?
Sure, uh, I'd like to, uh, qualify, make a motion to qualify Ms. Small as a professional engineer. Qualified, um, stormwater runoff civil considerations.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a motion made in second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries, please proceed.
Um, thank you. Um, as you're aware, um. Uh, Russ Jackson went over that the project is comprised of two lots. Um, we also have a large portion of the adjacent farmland that, um, historically runs in this direction. There is a berm that's in the way, so now it is more diverted towards residential homes that are on, um, West Passage. Um, linked with the proposed development is the proposal to rectify. The stormwater issue that the abutters are experiencing as a result of this, um, runoff. The proposal that we have in front of us as far as the, um. Addressing the runoff concern with the abutters, which I think is probably the biggest concern that everybody has right now. Cause we're just doing a modification of the, um, project. But the bigger, um, issue at hand, I think that you're interested in is how we're going to plan on. Addressing the stormwater issue that we're having. So there's a large farmland and if you look at sheet three in your packet, it's an aerial photograph. It's not to any particular scale per se, um. Actually it is, it's one inch equals a hundred. But, um, it shows you the, the, the size of the farmland that's coming down into this area. Um, we also show how big the area was that we were going to use as a drainage basin. Last year when we had, or I guess two thousand one, when we had originally met. And then the discussions we've had with, um, Court Chappelle and, um, Farmer Carter. Carter, is it Dan? Dan Carter? Okay, Mr. Carter. Um, in the meantime, and we've come to the agreement that we'll basically share the disturbance of land to rectify the drainage issue. So we'll be putting approximately half of that drainage piece on the farmland. And the rest of it will be on lot eight, which is the parcel that happens to be down gradient. On, on our project and we'll provide a buffer from the commercial development from the abutting neighbors. If you're familiar with the property, you, you, and from what you can see with the topography that we've rec- um, shown on our plans. There's a decent slope that runs down the property. So in order to provide the equivalent, um, drainage areas, we end up having three large. Almost like cascading basins, they'll drain from one to the next to the next. Um, and the goal is to try to slow down some of the flow that's coming off these fields before we discharge it towards. West Main Road. And it goes, it goes towards West Main Road now because once it travels through the neighbors' properties, it goes down West Passage and dumps onto West Main. So we're not introducing any new water to West Main Road. Um, the challenge that we have on where we discharge this, and I know this gets a little bit more into the design. But it kind of gives you a reason on why these basins have to be where they are. There's a peak in West Main Road right in front of this site. So right now, when the water goes through the site and dumps out at the southern part of this property or West Passage. It drains south on West Main Road. If you go north of, or just at, basically right around lot eight. With lot, the shared lot line between lot seven and lot eight, that's where you're basically getting the peak of West Main Road. North of that, it drains north. So if we discharge this water north of that lot line, we're creating an issue potentially. For properties that are north of this site because it, we will be introducing water that they don't have today. Um, so that's why we have the basins where they are. Um, so that you, you understand that going forward. And, um, then the commercial development is on the north part of the property. The commercial development itself has a si- very similar layout as we had last time we met. Um, we have the two buildings in the front that are smaller and then, um, larger buildings in the back. We did maximize the size of those that we could fit for proper circulation. But though, they may change once we get into the design a little bit. Because as you know, we do have some slopes to deal with. Proper grading and slopes for, you know, um, vehicle travel might affect the size of the buildings. They will not get bigger. Um, if anything, they will get smaller. We do have, um, approved septic system test holes in the back southeast corner. Um, so we'll be putting a dr- uh, septic system there. For now, I've, I've held a placeholder for about two thousand gallons a day. The type of flow you would have on this project is basically based off of, um, employees. So we don't expect a large wastewater flow for this project, but we just reserved the area for now. It will be a pre-treated system because it is a high water table, um, area. And we want to make sure we properly treat that before introducing it into the soils. Um, we also left stormwater areas for the actual commercial development of the property. Although they will be likely permitted at the same time, um, those areas are held, reserved down. Um, along the frontage on West Main Road. Um, we have talked to the water department and we will discuss with them in more detail as we go through the designs. How we'll be bringing water in, but it is available for the project. And I think that kind of covers everything, unless you have any particular questions at this time.
Any questions from Ms. Small? Use your mic.
The, is, are you going to be doing a new connection to West Main Road in drainage?
So because we're at the top of the hill, there's no catch basins to connect to. So right now, we had, we were basically using for the, um, farm, we'll call it the farmer's water. Just for clarification and to separate it from the commercial development, if that's okay with you. Um, so for the farmer's water, that system, we have it drained. Basically, we're going to be making the existing driveway for that house that's on the corner into a large. Um, riprap spillway to help slow everything down before it's discharged to grade. Um, to West Main Road. No, we're at master plan level, so we haven't done the full designs yet, run the numbers or made the application. But we do recognize that we'll need both ripdies and, um, a physical alteration permit from DOT.
Will there be, say, a drainage easement between, uh, the farm water and the commercial?
That is probably going to be something that we have to put together. We have attorneys.
Yes, cer- certainly assuming the, um, we get master plan approval this evening on these modifications. We'll proceed with the engineering and as Mr. Chappelle indicated, you know, we'll work together to, uh, come to an agreement as what works for all parties. And that will likely be memorialized in the form of some type of easement.
Any other members have a question? I, I just have a couple in, um. Is it, maybe you could just explain, um, the three basin design. And what you're going to contain and what design standard you came around and, and I know you're going to do this riprap spillway. Is that, is that something that has been used before? Just to kind of, so we can understand it.
Yeah, so, um, as, as you know, we've only, this is kind of glorified master plan. I know that's not a real term, but, um, we haven't done the actual full blown calculations. We just did enough to make sure we could, you know, slow down the water. Um, but you're right, it's, it's a little bit of a unique situation. Because as you all know, when we do a project, the drainage goal. For a project is to take your existing runoff and make your drainage design. So your proposed runoff comes off at the same time, at the same rate. We don't have any proposed improvements on the farm. So your existing and your proposed is the same. If we were going to try to make state code, all I have to do is make a big swell and dump it all. And that's exactly what it does today, you know, we would just reconvey it. We don't think DOT will entertain that. So we're trying to also slow it down because it is a lot of water that's coming through here. And so that's why we have these big basins and then they'll basically drain from one to the next. The piping system obviously hasn't been yet fully designed. Our intent is to convey all, if, if not all, most of, of all the storms, including the hundred year storm down this direction. Um, so there won't be anything going to the neighbors. Um, but exactly how much we're going to reduce that peak runoff? I can't tell you until we actually run all the numbers and are able to do it. What we want to do is safely convey the water through the properties in a non erosive manner. So, um, riprap spillways, that basically, I, I think you all know that, but it's basically big rocks. And when the water runs through it, it slows down additionally when it runs through there because it, you know, it has to bubble over all the rocks. So that creates a dissipation of that, that flow in itself. But to that, we're adding the cascading basins which will also slow it down. I hope that helps answer some of your questions.
Go ahead, Dave.
With, with you, uh, starting this all over again, do you have to go again to the fire department and all that for your road cuts and whatnot?
So we actually never got past starting. Um, we've been talking with, trying to talk with the farmer and negotiating an agreement on. How we were going to split up the drainage systems and we haven't done the full designs yet. But we will be working with the fire department, um, on accessibility. I don't know that they are interested in the stormwater aspect of the project, but they are definitely interested in the commercial development.
Answer your question, Dave. Another question from the board? Go ahead.
It is super imperative that the water, after all, this is done. These people that have been tortured, uh, with the property, you know what I mean? That all efforts are made because these people are listening and grateful themselves. Whatever, when it comes time, if you get your commitment delivered, we are going to go all out and just make it happen. Because in the past, there's been other projects, not with you, I guess, but it's. It was supposed to solve any city. And so I'm sure the point and a lot of people commend it. Really add, I mean, huge effort to, to, that's human cost. It just doesn't go well.
Yeah, so I mean, we will ensure that we have our proper designs. And then I guess a key point in making sure it's done well is that we, um, are involved during the construction as well. Um, which is the full intent at this point, to make sure it's built right.
I, I echo Mr., um, Harding's concerns because we, we, we heard loud and clear from the abutters and what they've gone through. And I, I certainly commend this developer for trying to solve those problems. Um, before I go to, to, to the planning department, I know one of the recommendations is, um. That we end up with a third, if, if we go forward with a master plan. The recommendation is to, to have a third party review of the drainage because it does appear that it is something a little bit different than we're used to. Does the applicant have any issue with any of that? Mister, Mister Jackson, okay. Okay, thank you.
So, I would imagine that you went that, not at a hundred percent, when you've done it, but at like thirty-five percent.
Exactly. I always hope we could get that before we get the state permits in hand in cases any revisions recommended. They can be incorporated while we're working with the state, because they'll be doing their engineering review as well.
Uh, so at what stage would you call that? I, I said throughout thirty-five percent, but it, um.
No, I think it would be, it would be a pretty decent level of design, but if we knew who the third-party reviewer was, um, we could discuss if we had any concerns, we could talk to them beforehand, but um, typically, what we would do, um, unless we bump into anything particularly challenging with the design and we have to make a choice one way or the other, um, is when we submit to DEM and DOT, we also submit to the third-party reviewer. That's the most efficient approach. Because then everybody's doing their review at the same time and then we can make revisions and make sure everybody's on board with the other engine, because now we'll have three reviewing engineers. Because DOT has their engineers and DEM, Ripley's program has their engineers and then we'll have the third-party review from the town and we just wanna make sure the plans include everybody's recommendations and doesn't have one engineer stepping on another one. So if we could do that all at the same time, that'd be great.
Any other questions from the small? How about the planning department, Lee? I know you put together a package here. Can you summarize for us?
I think I just wanna put on the record that uh, this is master plan and that if this does move forward, the applicant realizes as well as uh, staff that the applicant still has to come back for preliminary. And before the applicant goes to you for preliminary, they still will go to the design review board um, as well as TRC. Um, I, I have been hearing from the abutters that, um, you know, a very, um, thick vegetation buffer. They don't wanna see, um, the buildings. They want an aesthetic-looking building. If not, they don't wanna see the building. And this, this will be thoroughly vetted uh, multiple times before there is a final uh, stamp of approval on this. I obviously will let the abutters talk, but there's more steps to this than just um, an approval tonight. So I wanted to make that clear and uh, the fire department will be really vetting this for accessibility, maneuverability uh, throughout the, the property. There is a fairly steep incline at the entrance that we will be further discussing um, as we um, further uh, vet the project. The, there, there are more points to this project that we will talk about as we get into the further details.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Tivitt.
One clarifying question. This, this uh, says the applicant is requesting a modification to approve master plan to refile for planned corporate development, but they've withdrawn the last one, so it really, we're, is this a clean slate? They're, they're really asking for master plan uh, approval as a, as a fresh petition? I'm a little confused because it says a modification, but then they, they withdrew the, the uh, master plan.
No, again, I'm sorry, just to clarify, we had filed a modification application earlier this year, which originally was scheduled to be heard in March.
So you withdrew the modification?
Correct, because we, we collaborated a little further with the planner and then made a further change and that's what's before you this evening.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
And I think that's what we read into the record um, at first. Did I clarify, Mr. Tivitt?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Hitchen? Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Anyone in the audience would like to splee- speak, please approach the podium, state your name, address for the record.
Yes, my name is George Matthews. I live forty-eight West Passage Drive, Portsmouth, Rhode Island. I'm an abutter. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I kinda thought this nightmare had gone away, but it's reared its ugly head once again. Uh, if you were to look at that overhead with these four massive buildings, I liken it to a, a train wreck in my backyard, similar to the East Palestine train wreck that occurred. The difference being that the uh, instead of railcars and toxic plume, we're gonna have these massive warehouses with all kinds of noise and light and, and pollution. The last meeting regarding this application took place in October twenty twenty-one, at which time it abruptly ended way late into the evening where you wrote, voted to approve the land development master plan submitted by the applicant, Mr. Ko. It should be noted that Mr. Ko is no way affiliated with the current landowner, who is Mr. Ro- Russo of P and G Realty, Realty LLC. Mr. Ko is a prospective buyer who currently has a pending purchase and sales agreement with the contract with the owner. Land's not been sold, it's under contract. I also find it interesting that the application of the land development project is from P and G Realty LLC. And Mr. Ko, as a prospective buyer, is conducting the application process. Begs the question of P and G Realty LLC, yet Mr. Ko, as a prospective buyer, is, is conducting the application. Begs the question, is the application even legitimate? Your approval came on the heels of Mr. Ko and his attorney having a behind closed-door meeting with someone in the building inspections office.
Mister Matthews, I, I, that kind of rhetoric, we, we don't need it. If, if you could just address whatever your concerns are specifically.
And, and I think the history is important and transparency is important.
I'm gonna allow you to continue, but please, please stay on point.
I am. As a result of the meeting, a longstanding cease and desist order issued in two thousand eighteen, given to Mr. Russo, concerning the watershed problem that he created, was suddenly withdrawn. Some type of arrangement took place with Mr. Ko and the town whereby Mr. Ko apparently would take the corrective action to the watershed issue as part of his land development application. There is no transparency what took place during this meeting. It's unclear as to what formal and legal agreement was reached to remedy the watershed issue and to remove the cease and desist order. During my objection, the October twenty-one meeting, you essentially put a butters on the spot to almost essentially accept Mr. Ko's application as a fix to address the watershed issue. At the same time, for us to then accept the commercial aspect of it, which is the massive warehouses. There's two parts to this. The main focus of, of what I've heard tonight is all about the watershed issue. There's been no discussion about these massive warehouses. It's kinda obvious that the application process was somewhat circumvented by Mr. Ko as a way to
Again, Mister Matthews, you, the, the application, I, I have to stop you. You're coming off point. The application process was not circumvented. We have a duly submitted application before us that we're acting on. So please, please, sir, stay on point.
Okay, in other words, your approval of his master plan. Your approval was based upon this watershed issue. And we were put in a position to kinda, yeah, okay, we'll accept that at the same time. Here comes the, the uh, the, the uh, large warehouses. Those responsible shouldn't be put, taken off the hook, let off the hook. Responsibility lays with Mr. Russo, the town, and Mr. Carter. We shouldn't be put in a trade-off position of, do you want the watershed issue addressed? And if so, essentially live with this massive warehouses in our backyard. Mr. Russo doesn't take the action that he created, not Mr. Ko. I would think you could simply put a lien on his property, just as if I was selling my house and owed property taxes, that's what you would do with me. So before I proceed any further, and for reasons I've stated, I would respectfully request that, at this time, that the planning board put forward a motion right now that no land development application be entertained or accepted until such time as those responsible for the watershed, shed issue, i.e. Mr. Russo, Mr. Carter and the town, take the appropriate corrective action in the, with the watershed issue. A butter should not pay the price for those responsible for creating or allowing the watershed issue. Personally, although all the focus has been on the watershed issue, I can live with the watershed issue, which happens once or twice a year, depending on the conditions, versus the trade-off of looking at massive warehouses for the rest of my life. So I request the motion be put, that you respectfully put forward a motion to not entertain any applications until that's taken care of.
Are there any questions for Mr. Matthews?
Perhaps for the petitioner and response after your time.
Yeah, um, I, I do, we as a board, sir, are trying to act on an application that's before us. We've been through the part of, of P and G Realty. We've been through the part that the prior uses. We don't have any jurisdiction on that. We have to act on the application that's before us. We sat here many nights with you, sir, and understand that there's, there's, there's many water issues here. This parcel i- is, is zoned, I believe, commercial, is that correct?
Industrial light.
Or industrial. They have a right to do something, okay?
I know.
Scare me out. We're trying to act within the confines of the planning and zoning ordinance and we're trying to be responsive to the needs of the abutters to correct the water issue that's there. This is the tools that we have to work with.
I know.
Okay.
But that tool presented to us is kinda like, hey, accept that and it was put to me and this is a way, accept the, the, the development uh, project and, and this is a way to take care of the watershed issue as well. It shouldn't be that way.
I'm sorry that's the way it comes across to you, but there is an application before us and we're trying to act responsibly. We heard your concerns and we're trying to correct them.
The application says P and G Realty.
It, it's a duly accepted application. I, I can't, I can't tell you any different than that. It's before us. Um, they have their attorneys in present. Uh, we have our town solicitor. We've done everything we're supposed to do to accept the application. We're gonna act on it.
Okay, then I'll proceed. If you're not gonna do the motion, I respectfully request it.
I don't, I don't see a motion coming out of the board.
Well, then the butter should be afforded full transparency with the behind-the-scenes meeting that took place and involved any formal agreement regarding the release of the cease and desist order and the remedy of the watershed issue.
Again, I, I can't comment on that. I wasn't party to it. I, I don't think the town was.
It affects the planning board and your decisions. I really don't wanna be here, okay? And I told this to the design review board in sixth of March. And I thought this, there was legal issues between Mr. Russo and the prospective buyer, Mr. Ko. To what degree, I don't know. Needless to say, I got sick to my stomach when this project resurfaced. The American dream is to own a single-family home in a nice peaceful neighborhood. My dream, as well as others', will be shattered. For the rest of my life, I'll be sick every time I have to look out my window and see these massive warehouses. Right now, I see a field, an open field, where deer graze, where there's turkeys, wild turkey, coyotes, all kinds of birds, whatnot. All this wildlife and peaceful, quiet setting will be gone. There's no way, there's absolutely no way to screen these massive warehouses that conceivably could be forty feet tall. I've yet to hear the height of these warehouses. And there's no way to be able to abate any of the light and noise pollution. After thirty-two years of military service, my life savings went into purchasing the house forty-eight West Passage Drive. And I chose Portsmouth because of its natural appeal and beauty of its farmland and that it was not commercialized like Newport or Middletown. A heavily wooded forest, abutting my backyard was a nice serene fix. I was shocked when clearcutting started one Sunday morning in two thousand ten to find out the farmhouse and four-acre property north of me was sold and was be, to be commercially developed. Especially when my Realtor guaranteed that that property was protected. November two thousand ten, I think it's important to go over some of the history because there's a new abutters here and I'm not sure if it was here.
Mister Matthews, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to cut you off unless you've got anything specific to the petition in front of us. We can't revisit the history again, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, the watershed issue was created by Mr. Russo, by clearcutting all trees. It up, there was no root system to now absorb any of the water. He did a temporary fix with a, with a drainage system and retention pond on, on Lot Eight. That took care of the problem. And the problem back then flooded an in-ground pool in a basement, but this drainage ditch he did corrected the problem on Lot Eight. For some reason, in twenty eighteen, he filled in the drainage ditch and the retention pond and put up this earthen berm of which, you know, the result now, it diverted all the water from the farmland into the abutters' property. As far as the modification goes, it's not just a simple modification. It's a substantially different plan. It keeps both twelve-hundred and twelve-twenty West Main separate. It's changed the square footage and number of warehouses, added a stormwater drain sys- system on twelve-hundred West Main, immediately adjacent to the butters. And the land use, as you know, has changed to planned corporate development, which triggers an entire different set of requirements, including setback distances, lot coverage, height of buildings, et cetera. This modification is a major change, so it shouldn't just be approved as a modification. I think, I would think it has to go through the design review board, which was spoken of, and with a whole set of plans, and that it should start from scratch.
Can I just address that, sir? It, it, they are essentially starting from scratch. They withdrew the previous petition. We have a new petition uh, before us for planned retail service development. It's for the master plan review. It's essentially starting from scratch. We are gonna check all those boxes.
So that's not a modification?
No.
A PCD is promote, is permitted per Article Five Use Regulations as approved by the planning board. This gives you broad authority to approve or disapprove this particular development. Throughout the zoning ordinance, there's wording that regulations are intended to foster developments which are compatible with surrounding areas which incorporate buffers or transition areas to reduce potential negative impacts on single-family residential areas. Also wording of preserve natural characteristics of the land, provide for the protection of the na- natural, historic, culture and scenic character of the land. Portsmouth's to provide for the preservation, promotion of agriculture pro- production, forest timber resources and open land. I also, with the design review board, and I don't need to read it, but it talks the character of Portsmouth and it goes into elaborate length about all this stuff that I just said.
Mister Matthews, just one, you know, this is a three-stage process, so they're here for master plan.
Yes, but once the foot's in the door with a master plan, then it opens the door for everything else that's in a PCD. Planned corporate development, does it not?
What it also, what it does is it allows us to go forward and, and, and address some of the concerns you're voicing right now. Number one, buffer zones, lighting. You can't just come up and say, we, we can deny, there's no basis to deny someone who has a right to build on their property that's zoned appropriately. We have to give them a chance to show us how they're going to conform. You will, you will get another bite at the You will, you will get another bite at the apple. I'm making notes here that you're concerned about the buffer, you're concerned about the lighting, you're concerned about the drainage. Every board member here hears that. This is not a carte blanche that they get to move forward. There's a much more robust process here. I just want to assure you that I hear your concerns. And I heard the concerns the last time you're here, and I take them very seriously. I live in the town myself, as does everyone else, and we want to respect your area here. And we will, we will review it appropriately.
Well, I'm just putting forth my opinion. As in a butter, which I have the right to do.
You absolutely do.
And I, and I need, I want to make it perfectly clear that I'm reemphasizing. The character of this town. All the things I just talked about. And that you have the authority to approve or disapprove. And if you're weighing heavily. On one side versus the other, you can just as easily say, no, it doesn't fit in. With, with the residential area, with the farmland and a small campground that borders this property. You saw the overheads can stick out like a sore thumb, just like Russo Road does. And how are you going to screen a forty-foot building? You went through elaborate length with amendments to the solar. Ordinance. You went with this clear cut, no clear cut in the setback area. And you had a lot of, you addressed a lot of the concerns of the butters, rightfully so. With solar panels. How tall are solar panels? Maybe this tall? And you amended and said fifty foot. No, no clear cutting in that setback area. The setback area here is what, thirty feet? And you got the drainage ditch and all that that he's proposing. But still, from my backyard, it'd be a hundred feet. It's fifty steps. Out of sight, out of mind is one thing, and that's what you've done. With five-foot solar panels. How are you going to do that with a forty-foot building? And I ask you. Put yourself in my shoes. Would you want this in your backyard? Would you want this devaluing your property? There's the solar panels to the southwest. Of Hilltop. Now there's going to be this. Hilltop. It's going to affect the prices of all homes in Hilltop. At least fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars, I dare say. All homes. And that should be taken into consideration. As well as the aesthetics in the surrounding areas here.
You have anything else to place on the record, Mr. Matthews?
No, I don't. In closing, thank you for listening. I hope you take my concerns in earnest. Especially in view of what I've put forward here. And. The town is very troubling to residents, to butters. Should be troubling to the town, because all. Area that's becoming open. Portsmouth's being dotted throughout with warehouses. With solar panels and commercial buildings. And it's. Definitely taken away from the character of Portsmouth.
Any questions for Mr. Matthews?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Jackson, would you like to address anything that Mr. Matthews said?
Just briefly to clarify, my client is under contract to purchase this land by virtue of being. Party to that purchase and sale agreement. He has an equitable interest in the title, so he owns that property. As we speak, an interest in that property, the same way that Mr. Russo owns title to that property. So while he's under contract, he's vested in this. And he's working to do the best he can on a, on a parcel of land that's owned light industrial. And he's proposing a use that's allowed by right. And as you can see from the changes to the plan, this is a modification of the previous master plan approval. It's scaled down. We're not looking for something. More than what was previously approved. And if the modification is denied, then Mr. Cole will have to make a decision as to whether he goes forward with the master plan that's already been approved. He could move to preliminary plan. We're here tonight because we're trying to be transparent. We wanted to come before you and say, this is what we've come up with on a conceptual basis to make this project better. And that's why we've applied for the modified master plan.
Thank you.
Question.
There's, there's been no final design of the buildings yet. There are conceptual designs that were provided. Again, we're at master plan stage. And I chatted with Mr. Coe during Mr. Matthews' testimony. He said, as they're designed right now, they're thirty feet or less.
Can I ask it, maybe sort of the same question this way? Obviously, petitioner has a, has a right to build to a light industrial. You know, conforming standard, and fortunately, the butters are residential and benefited from having nothing in front of this light industrial. View for some time. And I appreciate, you said right up front, it's less intense, better than already approved for the benefit of the few members and. Folks in the audience who weren't here through the last master plan approval. You're reducing from six to five buildings, I think is what I heard as well. So is there any discussion of changing the height or profile? And increasing or decreasing to the remaining five? Are those otherwise essentially the same as what was previously approved? I mean. My memory from a few years ago, it looks similar. I just, any profile deviations from what was discussed then?
We haven't had those discussions yet because, again, I think part of what drives the design is. How we proceed through preliminary, we have to, our primary objective, as you've figured out, is to make sure that we address the stormwater issues. And. The plan is to take care of that on lot eight, but as the engineering proceeds, we don't know. What direction it's going to go. We don't know what additional accommodations may be required on lot eight. That could drive where the parking is, where the travel lanes are, and the size of the building. So. I don't want to, I mean, right now, they're approximately thirty feet or less. I don't want to make a commitment or agree to a condition. To, for something that is less than what's allowed in the zone. You know, and we just haven't gotten to the point where we've invested in final design of those buildings yet.
Fair enough, and I know you met with some of the abutters and you've heard Mr. Matthews' concerns, and I'm sure you'll take those to heart as well.
Absolutely. I think that's why we're here tonight.
Correct. Thank you. All right. Are there any other abutters that wish to speak? Let's start in the back. I saw that hand first. You could come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Fecto. And I'm at twenty-six West Passage Drive in Portsmouth, Rhode Island. And I'm a, I'm a direct abutter to the project. I live at twenty-six West Passage with my wife and my ten-year-old daughter. I've been a Portsmouth resident since nineteen eighty-seven. I actually lived in Hilltop since nineteen eighty-seven. My parents still live there. And I recently sold a house on Wilkie Avenue last year and purchased the West Passage property about a year ago, May last year. Reason I chose to settle in Portsmouth was the rural characteristics, excellent school system, great place to raise a family. I think we can all agree on that. And first off, I accept that the neighboring properties, lot seven and eight, are commercial or zone light industrial. And I do believe that they can be developed properly to minimize the impact on our adjacent residential neighborhood. Wanted to talk a little bit, though, about dwelling structure at twelve twenty West Main Road. On lot eight. This structure is approximately twelve to fifteen feet from our property lines currently. And the existing driveway is about two feet from our property lines. Understood that this house was built in eighteen fifty, but the dwelling currently is being used as a halfway house. I'm not sure if anyone's really aware of that, but it has had some recent issues. With some residents that has impacted myself and surrounding neighbors directly. Think in the last year since I've lived here that residents have produced about three arrests in the town. Most recent one was just this past Friday night. I was on my deck with my ten-year-old daughter and a resident highly intoxicated assaulted an Uber driver. I witnessed the whole thing. So with that being said. The original plan from two thousand and twenty-one. And this was before I had even thought about buying this house. Had that dwelling being removed. On the most recent plan, it shows that that dwelling is supposed to remain. The dwelling does not conform to current zoning setbacks for a structure on a light industrial lot adjacent to side yard setback. I believe thirty feet is the requirement. The new plan does not address any changes to the existing conditions that are grandfathered in. So essentially, lot eight next to me is a substandard lot of record. And upon major land development, I would push. For that lot to be required to come into conformance with current zoning standards. And the dwelling should be removed. If there's no action with this, there could be many potential different uses for commercial and industrial. Only a few feet away from a residential zone in the future. Also, the current plan proposes site drainage along the existing driveway for this dwelling that is directly on our property lines. And these two sites, lot seven and eight, are a little over five acres total combined. I feel that this could be redesigned to keep all of that well away from our residential properties. The current plan also has a driveway being relocated to the other side of that dwelling. To the north side, and what that would do is it would take cars coming in to the dwelling from the north side and wrapping around parking in the back. And this would point cars and headlights at nighttime directly into my yard towards my house. Furthermore, West Main Road is considered a traffic overlay district. One of the requirements for this is for projects to minimize the number of curb cuts for driveways on the roadway. So you have this riprap spillway, old driveway. You're going to cut a new driveway for the single-family dwelling, and then you're going to cut another driveway for the tradesman's center. So for that reason alone, I believe lots seven and eight should be combined and not have two new driveways put in. Furthermore, the current plan doesn't offer any screening to separate. Commercial property from residential property. And we haven't seen a lighting plan. I think we talked about that to understand if there'll be. Light pollution or what kind of lights spillage there'll be over the property lines. Or that the lights will be directed downwards and not pointing towards our yards. So in closing. I have concerns that lot seven is being overdeveloped, and it can't support the drainage required on site. The current plan indicates that lot seven and eight will remain separate. I know Attorney Jackson mentioned a administrative subdivision, but it seemed like it was only for part of lot eight, not the entire lot. My question is, what would happen in the future if lot eight is sold? And the new owner wants to do away with or modify the watershed drainage solution? So with that being said, these lots should absolutely be combined. Via administrative subdivision. And in my opinion. What would be former lot eight should be used as a buffer. Through our abutting neighborhood, including landscape screening and. The watershed issue's drainage solution. So generally speaking, since development is occurring on both lots, then they should be treated as well.
Thank you. Any, any board members have questions?
So since I've lived there in, since last May. I have not. I have not experienced what some of the residents who have lived there a little bit longer than me have experienced. But I liken that just to, there hasn't been rain events to the extent that. You know. It would create an issue in the last eleven months.
Concerns, we, we. Part of this planned unit development process to develop upon approval would have to enter into a development agreement with the town. So much of the same things that you stated, we would put in that development agreement. Such as no further development on lot eight, or you can't just do away with the drainage basins. I know that's kind of bizarre, but we can, we can put those in there to kind of. Address your concerns, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Any other board members have anything for Mr. Fecto? Anything else, sir?
Be it the preliminary level typically.
Absolutely. Screening, vegetation.
Prepare observations that we normally would address.
Yes. I made notes, the two driveways, we will take a look at all that, right?
Right. And just the drainage solution being just pressed right up against our property line on West Passage. It's like. A riprap spillway literally beat from mine and my abutting neighbor to the west of the Grand Champs. I mean, it's going to be Whitewater Rapids right behind our house, you know, it seems like. To keep that single-family dwelling there, they're squeezing us. On the south side.
Sure. And, and, you know, we've, we've seen the preliminary design, but our planning department has recommended too, if we do decide to go forward, one of the things we would do would bring in an independent third-party engineering review. To review all these calculations and designs as well.
Okay. Thanks for your time, everyone.
Thank you. There was another hand up, sir. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Bruce Family, Eddie from ninety-eight West Passage Drive. I have mostly questions. When I look at the aerial view, it looks like. My question, first question is, is the setback. That is in the eastern side, it looks like it's about. One hundred feet by two hundred fifty feet or so. There's a structure. Diagonally, what, yeah, that's it. What exactly, is that above ground or is that part of the septic system?
That looks like it's below grade. It's part of the septic.
Okay. So the, so the plan would be for that setback area to be septic, maybe a little parking? And.
The way it's presented, yes.
So septic, parking, and.
You have to speak into the microphone, though.
So, so that area would, the plan is for. Septic system. Setback area that has maybe a little parking and maybe some vegetation. Is that pretty much the plan?
Look, they don't have a vegetation plan yet, but from what they do show us, it shows parking and it shows a, an underground septic system. As the previous abutter stated, we would, we would, those are things that we would develop further on.
Later on, this is, right. So this is the preliminary plan, so there, so really, with question of the buildings. That hasn't been worked out yet?
No, that's correct. This is a master plan, then there's a preliminary plan, and then there's a final plan, so there's actually three approvals that are necessary to get to the end game.
Would. Another question I have is. When you look at the development at King's Grant as opposed to the one south of us. Is there any way to. Make these buildings. Nicer looking, I guess.
We actually have a design review process that the applicant would have to go through. And I know there's some architects that sit on that board that. Have some great opinions on the look and feel of Portsmouth, and they'll take a bite at this as well.
Okay. Where's the fifth building? I only see four buildings.
I think they're counting the other building, which is the house. That would be five. The existing structure.
Okay. The, the halfway house that's in the corner there.
The structure that, I don't know what it is.
The older house that's on the southern side. Okay. So, okay, so it's a preliminary plan, light industrial zoning. And. These building, the two eastern structures. At most would be about a hundred by two hundred, is that what it looks like? Okay. All right. It looks like the water plan has been worked out by the engineers and.
And as I told the prior abutter, you know, this is a preliminary drainage design, and we. We have got a recommendation from our town planner to bring in an independent third-party to actually review those. In, not just when it's done, but as the process progresses.
All right. Now, I just had some questions about what. I can see from the. From the plans, I just wanted to clarify what. What would, so, okay, thank you.
Hold on. Any questions for, sir, one second. Any questions from the board for you? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other other abutters that would like to speak? Please. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mark Rogers, seventy-three West Passage. I was wondering if you could put the other aerial up that they had? If that would be possible? So I just, I just wanted to point out the size of the buildings in comparison to the houses. The houses that are next to it. I took a ride to behind Dunkin' Donuts in Middletown to check out one of these kind of buildings. And they're massive. And outside your window, there's no kind of tree or anything that can hide or camouflage this. So I just, I just really wanted you to look at the. Size of the homes and how close it is. And just how big the buildings are. You know, and I know it's not really. Something to bring up, but once again, the character of the town. And this is on a high upgrade. And when people come into Portsmouth. And when people come into Portsmouth on West Main Road, this is what they're going to see on this hill. These big metal buildings. It's, you know, one more eyesore. I just really believe that Portsmouth town that used to have the signs that were with gold lettering. Has bars so low that these metal buildings are popping up and out people's windows. And, you know, it's all well and good to say, well, we're just going to let it get the master plan. But then after the master plan, I hear they've spent a lot of money on this. And then I see this slippery slope. So I just really wanted to say, and I hate to bring it up. My neighbors over on Maryl Rose, they're looking at things that were promised weren't going to happen. That they were going to be buffers and because of the grade of what's happening over there. They're going to have panoramic view. And that's how this is too, because this is on a hill that goes up. And from West Main Road, you can see where the new house is going in, how high that house is, and it's just a house. And what that looks like. And then if you put these large buildings. I'm just saying, this isn't the Portsmouth I knew. And, you know, you make the decisions. You know, you've been voted in to make the decisions to keep Portsmouth. Beautiful. I mean, I'd like to see it stay beautiful. I know that that's like a big stretch here, but that's what I'm asking is that you consider the beauty. And a metal building, big giant metal buildings, that's not doing it. I've seen two of my neighbors flee with the thought that they were going to look at this. They built these homes and they moved. And I have, I fear my other neighbor who's not here tonight, and I know why, because they are not going to stick around for this either. No one wants to look at it. And I'm sorry that my new neighbor that moved in has to be at this meeting after buying his home. With the threat of this being out his window. So, thank you for your time.
Any, any questions for Ms. Roderick? Thank you. And any other abutters would like to speak on this petition? Please. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Robin Youngkin, forty-nine West Passage Drive, and Lark is my sister. And I'm just, she pretty much said exactly what I wanted to say. So I'm just up here because listening to Mr. Matthews speak tonight broke my heart. And I agree that I think that you are the guardians of Portsmouth. You're here to protect us from this kind of development taking place in our backyards. And, uh, West Passage has already been sandwiched between the threat of this. Monstrosity that's going up that you can see dwarfs the rest of the neighborhood. And the solar array that we now have to live next to because this planning board and the zoning board allowed it to happen. I can probably count on two fingers how many people supported us when we tried to fight that. So I'm just asking you also to consider what is happening to our neighborhood. We are taxpayers. I feel that you should be on our side. Not on the side of developers who want to come in from other places and destroy the landscape of Portsmouth.
That you're, you're going far afield, ma'am. I, we hear your concerns. We are not here to be on the side of the developer. We're here to enforce an ordinance that's duly passed in the town of Portsmouth. That's what we're here for.
Well, I apologize for going beyond what is allowable in this room. However, I have to live with the result of what you decide. So, and so do my neighbors. And I just hope that you take a ride down West Main Road and see what is happening. Probably you don't live on the west side. I know that one of you does. I don't know about the rest of you, but if you lived there. You would want to protect that area too. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Just, just the plan, the, uh, just, you know, the target audience is kind of just presented as, as us and if. There's, we, we live within the rules as well, so we don't necessarily make the zoning changes, the order changes, establish new, um. Some, some of this I would say. Which means for form, the target audience may be the town council.
You know, we've been jerked around all over this town.
I, I mean, our charter is to, uh, provide something consistent, comprehensive community plan within. But the petitioner has proposed with, for light industrial use.
I don't know how you can approve anything when you don't even know what's going to go into those buildings or how tall they're going to be. I don't know how you can get to that step.
Three-step process.
Yeah, I've heard that before. Did you, did you have a question?
No, I, I mean, I was going to say something similar like where I could understand if you thought we were changing it from far, you know, farming or residential to business. We're not doing that. It's, that's what it's zoned. So where we have to follow what it's zoned as. We're not changing how it's zoned. And that's where.
But can't you decide what goes there? Can't you say, oh?
We have input on light industrial that goes there because that's how it's zoned. If it was, if it was zoned residential, we couldn't approve this to be here, obviously. We wouldn't. Um, but it's zoned light industrial, so that's what we have the authority to oversee is light industrial.
And, and we, we, many of us have, have, have been through this iteration before with the, with the neighborhood. We certainly respect their opinion, respect your opinion on, on the aesthetics. We, we're taking that in. We're making notes. We will, we will do the best of our ability within the confines of the ordinance to, to enforce that. And that's what we're charged to do.
And then once they, they start building and doing what they're planning on doing. Who is going to check and make sure that that is?
So we have an enforcement division. We have a building inspector's office. You know, we'll enter into a development agreement should the petition go on. Um, it's a signed filed agreement with the town of Portsmouth that'll state specifically what, what measures they have to take to get the approval. We actually have more control using a, a planned unit development ordinance than some of the other ordinances we have. Especially with a butter's vegetation, the drainage, being able to get a third party to review it. We'll use all those tools that are available to us so that we, we try to do a comprehensive plan review.
Thank you.
And I think Mr. Harding had something to say.
To make sure my own house, I had a lot next door, so I could control that nothing to pull. Was there ever that land offered to, like?
Like, that's, that's, that's kind of going a field from where we are, but.
Is that, we're kind of captive. That all along it's been a light industrial. Praying, like I prayed across the street that there wasn't going to be, and it could have been something like ours. It ended up was not near as bad as it could have been. I, for us to be able to reject something that the design review board, who are very strict, has not even had an opportunity to see. They may say, listen, we've got pitch roof, the pitch roof. They don't want the people looking at a gable end of the building and they want the. Pitch roof and the roof lines to be whatever they. It's, it, they deserve, and they've been paying taxes on that for a long time to get a shot. Of what might be acceptable. They, the design review may ask for way more and it's not worth their while. But it's not up to us to just shut it down because we don't want it, because we have our way, of course.
As far as I know of the history of that land, it was all wooded when I built my house on West Passage. And an older gentleman lived in the house that was there. He went into a nursing home and that's when Russo, I guess. I guess it was Russo purchased the land. So, um. You know, I, I don't, I can't afford to buy that land if that's what you're asking, like. I, yeah, I don't, I don't think so. And Luke, um, I respect you a hundred percent. I know what your battle has been too.
Okay, thanks, Luke. Are there any other abutters that wish to address this petition? Anyone online, Leah?
If there's anybody online that would virtually like to speak, just raise your hand. None noted?
Right, hearing none. Um, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of. Mr. Jackson, you have any closing comments? Wish to address any of the other comments that are brought up?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I think you've all spent a fair amount of time and I think all the issues, uh, concerns been put out there and. And I think we've, uh, made our case as to why this modification of the approved master plan makes sense and we were, would respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a, uh. Bless for a modification to the, uh. Approved master plan to refile major land development as a planned corporate development. Uh, and I'd like to, uh, as part of that motion incorporate the, uh, retention of. Third-party review consultation of by the downtown of the drainage proposal. Prior to or concurrent with the state review. Is that appropriate?
Yeah. Um, I, I, I would like to add that we encourage the petitioner to meet with the design review board. As soon as humanly possible to start the design of these buildings so that we can have them for the public to see.
And I'd like to add that then encouraging, uh, earlier meetings with the DRB. Right, okay. And, uh, also incorporating, uh, the three D, uh, which says view, but, um. The, the vantage to capture the view shed of the profile of the buildings from the, uh, budding neighbors. So some samples of that. Does that make sense? I think it tip customarily is part of the landscape plan and would probably come with preliminary.
I, I, I think what Mr. Tivitz is trying to say, and this is just an editorial, is we'd like to see as soon as you possibly can some of these items so we can start to vet them and not wait. Um, to get other input on them, please. That, is that the conclusion of your motion, Mr. Tivitz? Is there a second on the motion? Okay, got a motion made and seconded. Um, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next up is owner Applegate Aquinita Club Inc., AP twenty-six, lot ten Willow Lane. Request for a modification to the development of lot ten, which is part of the Aquinita Club Plan Resort Development to reduce the number. Of residential units from thirty-six to twenty-eight. Uh, I am going to continue my recusal of this petition and turn it over to the vice chair, Mr. Harding.
I, I am ready. I just want to make sure you guys don't want to take a break because this one might be a little bit too. Okay. Okay. Court Chappelle. Yeah, it is. Uh, Court Chappelle, Law Office is at one seventy Chase Road. I'm here on behalf of Aquinita Club. Uh, I have a number of people to introduce and we're going to put this on as a full petition, but I am going to explain a little bit. How we got here because it is a, uh, pretty rare, the way that happened. But I do represent the Salanton Group who is in charge of developing this piece that we call lot ten. That is before you, uh, the engineers are Dennis Dupree and Molly Titus from his office. It's. Chris Casellas and Jeff Salanton from the Salanton Group. The Jeremy Lake is here, who is from the, uh, the architect firm. And Nate Godfrey, who we all know as an expert in real estate. How we got here is this is really just Carnegie or what we now know as the Aquinita Club. It has never really been before you as the person that could say yea or nay. Because it's always been developed in front of the zoning board under what's called a special use permit. It's now a PUD, Planned Urban Development, specifically under Article Eight. And specifically under the portion of the ordinance called Planned Resort Development. You know all about Planned Resort Development because you basically have from the beginning. Members of this board at least seen the Newport Beach Club, which was the neighboring property on the warehouse property. After the development of Carnegie began in nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and one. First with the Abbey Golf Course and the units. And then with the Kaiser Hotel, Carnegie Heights, the Marina. All of those pieces were always kind of looked at together as a resort, even though they weren't under the resort ordinance. When Brian O'Neill grabbed the Warehouser piece and some pieces around it. He met with the town and Mr. Gilstein. And they codified an ordinance that brings us here tonight, which is the resort ordinance. And said, hey, you know what we did over there? Let's get together and instead of haphazardly do it, get yourself a set of rules and put it in front of the planning board. So what happened is really what makes up the resort is a number of lots, twenty-six, ten, two, four, three. And then a number of the Abbey lots, and together they make up what you already know. Number of Abbey lots are leased land by the resort, which are the golf course. There's the old Montauk Point, which is the Carnegie Heights, approximately twelve units, I believe of. Kind of one acre lots and single family homes. The Marina, which is a private marina with public access. The piece alongside the Marina, the old Kaiser Tower, which is eighty units known as the Tower. The cottages, which are the buildings that are single family separated and around the small pond. The residences, which are on Carnegie Harvey Drive, and it was all done over the years in, in pieces. But when it was done as a special use permit, there were legitimate challenges. When it was all happening, it was okay. And that was, most of the stuff was all done between nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and six or two thousand and seven. And when the economy came back and they came back, we went to the zoning board. Specifically what we're talking about is twenty-six lot ten. Twenty-six lot ten is a six point four acre piece in the middle of the resort. And it was approved for thirty-six units with approximately eight buildings, if I recall. Some of those buildings very long and very large. And those thirty-six units, the zoning board heard all of what we call the A through J criteria. Or a special use permit, that it was compatible with the neighborhood, fit in the comprehensive plan, protected solar rights, all the things that we have today. There was an issue because as you know, special use permits generally, if you're built within a year, you're good and it can expire. So when we came back to go for a special use permit. They accepted the application. It was back when Mr., uh, when Mike Assiello was the planner. And they accepted the application. When we got to the planning board, I'm sorry, when we got to the zoning board. They send it to you for an advisory opinion, similar to the stuff you've seen tonight. You actually gave it an advisory opinion in February of two thousand twenty-two and heard the exact same plan. With the exact same testimony from the exact same people you heard tonight. Or you're going to hear from tonight. You got the design review report. You incorporated the design review report. So, so nothing much has changed. What changed is there was a legal battle when we went back to the zoning board on despite the fact they sent us to the design review. And despite the fact we got the advisory opinion from the planning board that they asked for. Now it was a jurisdictional issue of whether we could proceed, legitimate legal issues. One of the ways, certainly not the fastest. Sorry, Jeff. Certainly not the cheapest. But one of the ways was to say, rather than figure that out, let us go to the town council. Let us go to the town council and try to amend the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance that passed the resort district had jurisdictional base guidelines. It was from the Mount Hope Bridge to the Bay, to Willow Lane, to Bristol Ferry. Now, if you know the area and know that circle, half of so of what we call the Carnegie Resort, including this lot. Carnegie Heights and the Marina are inside the jurisdiction of the resort district. The tower is on the other side of the road. The golf course is on the other side of the road. The residences, the cottages are on the other side of the road. So the planning board did not have jurisdiction. So the planning board did not have jurisdiction to apply the resort ordinance to the development because half of it was inside and half of it was outside. So we went to the town council and asked to amend the law, to modify the jurisdiction, to leave it the same on Willow and those things, except for those lots currently being occupied by the resort, the tower, the golf course and those, to add those to the resort district. So now the planning board, under Article 8 PUD, has jurisdiction to look at this the same way you do the Newport Beach Club. But it did more than that because there could have still been a controversy of what, you know, do I have to come and prove to you that this is a resort, or are we certifying it as a resort? And as to those things that haven't been built within a year, have they passed, or do we have the right to do that? And it went in front of our town council, your bosses, I guess, and they voted. And after a public hearing, said that what is there on these lots is certified as a resort under your ordinance. The same development plan, if you will, that you would have on the Newport Beach Club. And specifically, the 36 units here and some other approvals that are in the process and that might have in the condo docs and might have easements and those things, but that haven't put a shovel in the ground, those are part of the approvals. So technically, my clients could build the 36 units as were approved back in 2009, as the 2009, I don't know if any of you were here, quite frankly, but as the 2009 planning board did an advisory opinion on. So now what happens is we are back here without any of those issues. It's just, hey, that's the development plan, and now we are here to modify that plan. There's a standard under Article 8, and that you look in subsection 10. Subsections 10 says if we wish to change that plan, we need to come in front of you and give you that change. If you consider it minor, Leah could have signed it all by herself, or she could have sent it to technical review committee, which you'll hear we did, or she could send it to the full board. The only difference is if it's minor, like the Newport Beach Clubs come before you with some minor changes, hasn't really been noticed to everybody. If it's major, then there's a procedure that it goes under the subdivision rules and regulations and has the same procedure as preliminary, which means everybody within 200 feet gets their notice. We weren't going to come here tonight and have a debate on whether it's minor or major because the only difference is notice. And unfortunately, we had to send out a large bucket of certified mailings to everybody within 200 feet, and Mr. Gavin, your solicitor, also wanted every member of the club itself notified. So if you have a boat slip, you got a letter. If you have a mailbox over on Lot 17, you got a letter. So everybody's been notified, but it is the same petition to try to say, in the end, we got 36 units in eight buildings. Some of those were very large apartment-type buildings, hundreds of feet long. We would rather make 28 units reduced by eight. There were 36 three-bedroom rooms, units approved. These are 28 three-bedroom units. So we are reducing the number of bedrooms by 24. Now, we're still going to tell you that the septic system's working, and Lynn's here to tell you that not only was it designed for the 36 units, which should on its face make it okay for 28 units, but might as well your first shot at it. Here it is. Here's what had been testified to over the years. Here's why it's working. Here's what the projections are. And yes, this is, this is, this is good. We think we're going to be able to show you that 28 units is better than 36 units for traffic. It's better for layout because it's not big giant buildings. You pretty much know I'm in a butter that was against a bunch of things over the years. I'm one of those guys that sees it as a better than what it was, but you have a right to look at all of the things that you would generally look at. And your standard according to 10 is that I find that the plan is as fitting with the ordinance as the original or better, not that it's worse. Now, you can have less units and technically be worse. I understand that. I don't think we're going to find that, but we could. But it's not supposed to be worse than what was approved. I think if we were in here with 40 units, we'd say, isn't 40 worse than 36? Isn't the density worse than it was? But we're ready to apply the resort ordinance. We're going to tell you what was approved back in 2009 to 2012, and I gave you not only the full set of plans that was approved, but I gave you the zoning decision on all the variances and, and everything. So I think you need a starting point. I don't think it's easy to say, this is better than what was, unless somebody tells you what was. So this is what was approved. This is why it's better, and most of our testimony will end with that question. Have you reviewed the engineering of what was? Is this the same, better, or best? To help you to try to get to that decision. So with that, I believe Mr. Salanton was going to lead off and just give you a little bit of background. I've asked him not to complain too much about how long the process has been.
Well, thank you very much. Jeffrey Salatin, my office is at 75 Sokanosa Cross Road in Cranston, Rhode Island. And the Aquinic Club asked us to join their team to help them in the planning, in the development, the construction, and ultimately, the marketing of these units. We're very proud of the work we've done to date. It's taken us a great deal of time working with Dupree Engineering and with Union Studios, who's done a lot of wonderful work for us in planning, and the court knows the history of the neighborhood better than I think anybody that ever could have presented it to you, so I'll just turn it back to court and tell you we're here to answer any questions you have. Thank you so much.
I will, I do want to put, say one thing for Leah because I promised to say it, so Leah can correct me when I didn't say it. We went to technical review committee, but it was only a few days ago. There was various comments made from Department of Public Works and from the fire chief. Two people that we clearly want to get on board so that you're not doing things over their objection but with their blessing. So we understand that we're looking for modification approval tonight, but it's going to be subject to coming back to satisfy, satisfy final approval because we're working with the fire department. You're specifically going to hear we're working with the fire department in road widths. And if you say, well, maybe you should have had that already, I want you to understand something. You took, under this ordinance, the road widths would be 24 feet. But it specifically says that the planning board in the resort district can modify those down. You have specifically modified Newport Beach Club to 20 feet. When we, originally, that was approved in '09 at 20 feet. When we filed for this permit, we went, we came here for an advisory opinion at 20 feet, and we got an advisory opinion, and the fire chief at the time, at the time, apparently was okay with the modification. This chief at least asked us to address his concerns that at 20 feet, do we have parking? Because 20 feet's okay, but when people park on that road, that might, so we're in the process of trying to see if we can make some modifications to get it up to 22 or some alternative parking, so there'd be no street parking. Or I think the comments were, at least, we want to make sure there's no parking in the areas that would be thin with a turn of a fire truck and those things. So that is not completely fully developed because it really just happened on Wednesday, I think, or whatever it was last week, and Friday, but we did agree. If I put enough on you, because I promised I would put on that we'll come back for final on that, so that you're not just approving everything without really, you know, working out the concerns of not only a butters, but certainly the concerns of some of our public officials. Jeremy?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you bring up the plans that we submitted?
First of all, could you introduce yourself?
So Jeremy Lake, I'm a principal at Union Studio Architecture and Community Design. Our offices are at 160 Mathewson Street in Providence. And when we get the drawings up, I'm going to share with you guys again just a quick overview of the site design. Again, as Court mentioned, it it hasn't changed from the last time I would have seen you, so I promise not to belabor the point. I just want to point out some of the highlights of the proposed community.
I do know that in reviewing the decision that came in February, two of you weren't here. I think Nora and Kathleen didn't sit on the final day according to the decision. The rest of you, I think, were here. So what, so to somewhat, we do have, I do want to
Right, okay.
For everybody, so they
Certainly.
Give me a second, I'm having some trouble sharing this.
Is there a second PDF with the architectural plans? I can, I can speak to whatever you got, but I think there was a civil set and then there was an architectural set.
I have it, I have it up here. It's just not wanting to share.
And while, while she's doing that, I can give you a little brief overview. Remember that 36 units were in eight buildings, and the real difference is, you know, you're going to have common walls and you're going to have people in, you know, a very large building. There has been two examples in your resort district, both at Aquinic that exists now and at the Beach Club, where a number of, Nikki called them separated apartments, but single-family houses relatively close together because people don't really want common walls, they want their own space, they want to own it. I get, remember they're vacation homes. I get that most of us want, live in the middle of a field with 100-foot buffers, but they would rather have single-family homes with some separation between the building than common walls, sharing hallways, sharing doors. So the, not only the marketability of it, but the aesthetics of bigger buildings and smaller buildings. The most successful parts of both Newport Beach Club and Aquinic Club have been these tennis units, which were the first ones sold down the Beach Club. It's just a nice size unit that has a local, well, we might go to old school. It gives the community feel, and again, some separation. I think we can all understand. I'd rather not necessarily go through a common hallway and deal with everybody every day and have my own entrance and those things. That's kind of the plan. So originally, you had the opportunity to review the 36 units and those things. And we were, you were tasked with the opportunity to try to make them these separate dwellings and to see regarding density and things, how it would lay under this odd-shaped 6.4-acre piece.
That's correct. So it really was trying to shift from what was effectively a multifamily project, one that's really more of a single-family project. So the general configuration keeps the existing roadway that runs along the railroad right-of-way that's still in place. There's an existing gatehouse that sits down in the lower corner that still is in place. The real change was really trying to create this internal set of sort of streets and blocks. Again, it's a very small scale, but the idea being that you could have an interconnected set of roadways, homes that all front on those roadways. We even include a sidewalk on one side of the street so that the residents here have the ability to walk around without necessarily having to go onto the street itself. Every home has a front porch that is the sort of connection between the sort of public realm and the unit itself. We've also incorporated a couple of common green amenity areas. So we have the one that's down at the end of this first loop with a number of homes around that. And we've also had the secondary space that's just off of the railroad right-of-way road that also has a number of homes fronting around that green space. There are 28 total units. 20 of those are in this type, which is effectively a one-and-a-half-story unit. You've got a primary bedroom on the ground floor. That's a type that resonates with a lot of, especially older buyers. 20 of the, 28 units are of that configuration. The other thing we had to contend with is when you get back to this backside of the site, you can't see the topography here, but there's effectively a hill. Most of the site is relatively flat. You get back to that corner and it shoots up about 10 feet. And so we came up with a second housing type that could effectively tuck into the hill. So they have a garage on the lower level that backs into the hill, and then on top of that garage level, you have what is essentially a one-and-a-half-story cottage. So it's ultimately a two-and-a-half-story, although on the backside, it only appears as one-and-a-half stories. So that one has a very different configuration inside because it has a couple more floors. But again, all of these are relatively compact three-bedroom units, and ultimately, what we're trying to create is a little pedestrian-friendly, walkable community, like I said, that's more single-family cottage in character than the multifamily character of the previous project.
Unlike the giant apartment buildings, these actually have garages, which there's an argument that's a better amenity, not make it look like a commercial building, but to make it look like a residential neighborhood. And each house not only has the two-car garage, but it has a driveway that fits two cars according to the size and requirements of our parking ordinance with at least 20 feet from the, from the parking lot, sorry, from the sidewalk and a width of 20 feet, so two cars can go side by side.
That's correct.
And our parking ordinance for a three-bedroom house only really requires two parking lots, so this is, there's no variances. This is in excess of what is there. And that is one of the things we dealt with with the fire department, that if you have four spots, and I know guys like me fill their garage and may not park in it, but vacation guys and people that aren't there often may not, may not have the cluttered garage that we have. But we're, we believe that by providing adequate parking with each of the units, there'll be less of a concern with parking on the street. And can you tell us a little bit about the style of the houses, what they're going to look like?
Yeah, certainly. So now that we're up on the big screen too, that's really great. If you can go forward a page or two. We did include some of the preliminary elevations and floor plans for the units. Again, I won't belabor these, but this gives you a sense of a couple of types that we have. The upper left is that predominant type. That's the story and a half cottage. Again, there's 20 of those. You can see those have the two-car garage, but one thing we always try to do is set the garages back off of the front of the house so that what really projects, what you really see initially is the front porch and the front entry to the unit. So we're trying to minimize the impact of the garage could potentially have. To the upper right, you can see some of the units that tuck into the hillside. A couple of those are standalone, single-family detached, and then a couple of those, as you can see at the bottom of the page, are actually attached to create a duplex unit. So I think we, we have three instances of those duplexes. So six of those units are in a duplex format. Two of them are standalone, single-family detached format.
But the total is 28 down from 36. It's just that three of them are duplexed.
There are three duplex buildings, which would be six units of the 28.
And how did you come up with the design given Portsmouth's community towards?
Yeah, so it's absolutely meant to, to try to fit into the traditional character of what you would mostly find for the residential fabric of Portsmouth. You know, it's going to have shingles and siding, the kind of eaves you'd expect to find, types of windows you'd expect to find. Again, it's very much meant to blend into the character of the existing Portsmouth community.
And that was all presented at the design review and incorporated into the last decision, is that right?
That's correct.
I know we have a landscape architect that may be back, but tell me about, a little bit about the landscaping.
Yeah, so we, one of the big moves is actually along Willow Lane. Currently, on the south side, along the tower, there's a fence and an existing set of flowering hedges there. What we're proposing is actually mirroring that on our side of Willow Lane as well, so you're creating a sort of symmetrical way down Willow Lane. And once you get into the community, we're proposing a fairly regular series of street trees. Again, the idea of providing shade and character, bringing down the scale of things there as well. And then certainly, we'll have a number of foundation plantings around the units. The upper left-hand ridge there is a, is a rendering, trying to show the effect of the fence and the hedge on the right side to mirror what you already have on the left side. And I think the lower left is along the railroad. There's, there's currently landscape that occurs between the railroad itself and the roadway, and we would work to preserve as much of that existing landscape through there as we, we can.
And this is probably not as much for you, but for the engineers. But in an industrial zone, we have 60-foot setbacks on West Shore Road and 30-foot setbacks, and we've maintained industrial setbacks, even though now that it's under the resort ordinance, they could be as little as 13 feet on a front yard and rear yard, 15 on the side under your ordinance. But when we got permission from the council, because we kind of told them what we were doing and that we had the same thing, we didn't go try to add more units now that technically we may be able to, and we didn't try to encroach further on boundaries, even though that we may have been able to. But it's still, it's relatively tight. And I'm going to let you make a pitch for your sidewalks, and I'm going to lead with that. We got 20, we asked for 20-foot roads, and that's what's designed, and we have, we are not so arrogant that we're going to come back before you on final and say, hell with what your fire chief said. Just go over his head. We are trying to work with him on trying to make 20 feet work with either extra parking or or reinforced gravel on the side so that you could park on it, or take it out to twenty-two feet. But one of the easiest things was, hey, why don't you just make them twenty-four feet? If we make them twenty-four feet, we have to encroach further on the boundaries that, and the setbacks that we've kept. And we kept West Shore at sixty, and we kept Elliott at thirty, and we kept Willow at thirty. And we kept the houses on the other side of the tracks at that, at that full distance. So we didn't really wanna say to neighbors, hey, I know this plan, we've seen two or three times, we're doing it. So we're trying to affect it that way. The other way is to get rid of an amenity. The lake design that on the side of the road was a five-foot landscaped strip, a swath and a five-foot sidewalk. But he believes in this project that that is an amenity, and so does my client, that that's a good thing. I can always fuck off a sidewalk and a landscaped strip to get extra footage. We don't wanna make a sidewalk less than four feet, because we have ADA compliance and things. And the landscape strip, we wanna keep the same. We have looked at talking with the fire department about possibly making the road twenty-two feet as a compromise and taking down the landscape strip by a foot and taking down the sidewalk. So he's not mad at me that I sold out on his amenity. My client's not mad at me that he still gets the landscaping sidewalks he wants and the fire department can work with it. But that, we'll, we'll come back for on that. Any approval would be conditioned on us coming back before you with either a sign-off by the fire department or a further discussion.
And one last thing, which is we just, we have a perspective view, that if you can, if you can find that for me, the aerial perspective. And I think it's, in some ways, they're the, the most useful way of trying to understand the scale and the character of it. So this view is if you're in a hot air balloon floating over the railroad and the foreground is this, this green space you see here. Do you, you're gonna get a sense of how the homes are arrayed around that space, fronting on that space, really making that a community amenity? Folks looking out over that space, hopefully sitting out on the front porch on a nice day. You can see how the road, the other road then bends back and around the back curve there, the secondary green space in that back corner. You can see the units that are tucked into the hill and that, on that backside. But again, the majority of the units at that one-and-a-half-story scale. And you can see the little gatehouse there off, off to the left. Again, we would preserve that as a little, sort of, it's like a landmark, right? It's a community feature, it doesn't actually serve as any kind of gatehouse, there's no gates being proposed. So hopefully that gives you a sense of the scale and the intention of the community.
And the height of these units?
The story-and-a-half units, I think we calculated were roughly twenty-eight feet to the ridge, you know, to the absolute highest point. I'm trying to remember on the other ones, I would imagine it's another ten feet on top of that. So it's probably thirty-eight, as you'd see it from the front. Again, on the backside, because they tuck into the hill, they'd only be the story-and-a-half height in the back, so it's a little more complicated.
And remember, one of us, one of our pictures, of course, and one of the things we have to convince you is that this change is equal to or better. We've heard tonight that people don't like forty-foot buildings next to them. That's what the resort allows. And we have the plans in front of you, but the largest apartment building was closer to thirty-seven. So these are much shorter. If you know the area, and you know that I know the area all too well, I am the butter down here. But this really is inside of the resort, it's kind of very low-lying. You, you can't see it from the water, they're not gonna have water view. You may see it if you take down vegetation on one of your train trolleys. Willow Lane, it's gonna mirror the other side and look the same. And West Shore, there's not only the sixty-foot buffer, but part of the plan from both design review and here is that all that tree line, which is heavily tree and mature trees, all be maintained. So it, it, we're trying to get it to sit inside of our own resort, affecting mainly our own resort. And I realize Willow's a public road, but the truth is, from, once you get to the beginning in Carnegie to the water, it's public for the marina, but everything on both sides is really an internal kind of resort road. It is purely public, but it affects, doesn't affect, not a pass-through road where everybody's there. Really is mostly self-contained for the resort known now as the Aquinic.
Great.
And any questions, Mr. Allen?
They require that the owners of all their cars park in the park. You're not supposed to actually even see it, but it means that they consciously have the space for their cars, which would also then make it that on occasion, somebody has to come by, two or three or four people, you can get them off the road by just that door. I've seen some work that I've never seen a car on the side of a park. And, and they all claim it's because there are too many cars or all the, the amount of people. The other thing is at Whitehall, they have these certain areas, they just have three parking spaces off the road that if you belong or you're going once to any of the three or four houses within that area, that if you have to pull in, to go in, to do something, you're off the road. And again, there, you never, ever see it. So if there are randomly spots that you could, in like that park area, just make it where three parking spaces could get in just in case a car needs to do. Those are things that have proven themselves to be, and like I said, I'm either of those two. I've never one seen a car parked.
And I think that's great, and when we deal with the fire department, we'll, we'll deal with that. And you'll get the opportunity to see that, whether it's in the condo docks or, or how we do it. I, I will also tell you that there's, the sidewalk goes out to Willow, and Willow is about the only road in town that we actually can park on without blocking traffic.
Yep.
And there's the public parking for the marina that is just past this. So if I personally owned one of these units and was having a gathering, there is at least places in our resort that we can park people to. And golf court, but, but we will, we'll, we'll specifically address how with the fire department and with this board when we come back, how to keep cars off of our internal road, whether they're twenty-four or twenty feet. We don't really want parking all over them. It's messier.
Sure.
That's fair, Mr. Allen?
Oh, a couple more questions. One more question.
So I just wanted to clarify, because, so this is twenty-four freestanding and two duplexes, but you're saying it's twenty-two freestanding and three duplexes, is that right? I'm just, just this, no, like what we.
Oh, did I?
Twenty.
Or somebody might, I think it's three dup-
Yeah, at least in this plan, which I think is our most current, we have three duplex buildings, that would be six units. We have twenty of this larger and two other singles, so according to the drawing, it would be twenty-two.
So the units are the same, but I, I may have.
No, it's fine, I just wanna make sure, so.
I'm sorry, how many freestanding has it changed to now?
Twenty-two freestanding, six in duplex format.
I think I had twenty-four and two duplexes then.
You, you had twenty-four and two, and now it's twenty-two and?
It's three duplexes, which would mean six units. Depending how you're counting it.
Same units.
Twenty-eight total, still.
One, four duplexes, three duplexes instead of two.
And my, my other question, and I never know when the time comes to ask this one is, but are you required to have two low-to-moderate income units? Because they're.
Not, not under this ordinance and not as grandfathered from before. I'm not saying the board doesn't have to do it, but if you look under your ordinance, the low-to-moderates come in under the planned marina development, because of the density in planned marine development at one per five thousand. Under that ordinance, under your Article Eight, LMI is specifically addressed.
And it doesn't mean that, that even if it was, there hasn't.
No, I know, I know that it doesn't have to be in the state, but you're saying it doesn't apply at all.
Well, it's, it's cer-, it's not mandatory for a couple of reasons. One, your ordinance doesn't make it mandatory. That doesn't mean under the Newport Beach Club, you didn't ask them to do science for starters, so it's the fully disclosed. But in this case, remember, we have thirty-six units approved without that, so.
So it was under special use permit, it was also?
It was not, certainly not in a, you know.
It's not a part of it.
It was not part of it. And normally when.
Was that for thirty-six?
Thirty-six units were approved, yes.
And when?
Two thousand and nine, and postal permitting or final permitting, two thousand and twelve, just not built. Remember, there was a tolling then, and you didn't have to build between nine and seventeen. Remember also that LMI, although certainly important, is also usually a density bonus. You say, because you're doing more than what is allowed, we're gonna allow you more units if you give us some LMI. Fairness to these guys, they're doing eight less than what they're done. But to say less and then add LMI would be an interesting component at this point.
I think it was just about density, it was about our.
Well, trying to get ten percent. And I, and I will tell you, because it was different, the reason why it generally wasn't done in resort and in the SUP is because these, the tower, everything, they were kind of glorified hotel rooms. They are not year-round components, they're not year-round housing, they're not really, they're often, that's why they're resort units. You can have more resorts per square acre because the impact is not the same as twenty-eight three-bedroom units full of, that are more likely to be full of children. As, as you know, Carnegie, I don't, there's not a bus on, on Aquinic and a child in Aquinic that goes to public school now. There are children living there. There are a few, and this came up the other day, there's a few in the Newport Beach Club. But certainly a single-family neighborhood with, Beach Club's about a hundred and fifty-eight units, that was a single-family neighborhood there would be.
I mean, I do remember that, and it was one of my studies, is every time there was an LMI as part of it, we always got kicked out of Weaver Cove. And that's why Weaver Cove has to lose more than what it's fair share for what it was, because there was obligation in the path, in the development, that instead of having the affordable housing in that area, that it was put and locked in Weaver Cove. In the, I don't, can't remember the percent of the detail, but there was.
There was a component in Newport Beach Club for the LMI. I don't, Kevin, man, I don't know if there was in the Beach Club, but it's already done. And again, we would have done it based on the number of units granted, not add to it by reducing units.
Right.
Um, Willow Lane, just somewhere in this, is that a town road or?
I believe Willow's a town road.
I don't, sure.
Now, a-again, it, the width of it was because back in the day, obviously Kaiser Aluminum was Pearson Yachts, Warehouser and Montauk Point were your four prime industrial pieces in town that had not only the rail access, but the sea access and the gate. And, and even Brown LA, it was designed to come from Pearson Yachts and turn left. Anyone that's turned right on Brown LA, real, from Willow realizes that road was not designed for anything but a one-way exit strategy.
West Side, you're in Eastman, is that a Green Eastman, electrical Eastman, utility Eastman, or is that just the Pinkish thing? It's on sheet eight, thirteen, what you call them.
I call the West Side Elliott Drive, right?
If there's a survey plan, I can.
Maybe Molly can. Are there any Eastmans on the west side?
So. The lines of, of that, I don't think this area is, but that was the paper street.
So there's a paper street there, and remember, all of these units you're gonna hear are part of the sewer plan and were all culminated. That is the direction of the sewer, so I'm assuming that. Remember now, to the east is what we call the clamshell road. That is a road that is a hundred percent on our property. But back when there was development, there was an agreement that that was the way to get from the Newport Beach Club, a separate entity, but working in harmony with Carnegie. So that is open, so that road already exists. The apartments were all designed to have the entrance and exit off of that road. And we held that off of this road, so that you, you'll come out and turn. Again, it might not be for today, but your, your Public Works Director, you could technically get to that clamshell road by going West Shore or by going Willow, based on the structure of Willow and the size of Willow. They wanted us to commit to construction vehicles on Willow. And there's traffic issues with some of the neighbors we talked about. We were, we wanna work with the police department. Willow happens to be, for those of us that have grown up here, going with Dave and I, very long straightaway that's wide, that looks like a race-struck car strip and has been used as such. The neighbors, me and Andy and George and everybody that was down there has always asked the police to be more vigilant down there to stop some people from going very quickly. And we did say that, in talking to some neighbors, that when we work with the police and fire, we'll see if we can get. I don't, I don't think they'll ever put a speed bump on it, quite frankly, but at least some posted signs, because I think they're lacking them. And, you know, with us asking to, that might lend more credibility than just, just the other neighbors, so we agreed to do that.
So I, I, if you could indulge or clarify for me, it's a, it kind of, it came across to me as, hey, this is a better plan for, you know, density and character, because your number of units is down eight, number of beds is down twenty-four, you know, shorter profile. It's, it just seems with the single-family separation, and you're going actually from like seven buildings to twenty-five or whatever, we figured out, because they're not connected anymore. It's with the separation, it just seems like gotta be higher density. Could you speak to the density relative to what was proposed under the multifamily complex? Just in terms of horizontal impervious, and then, and again, tying it back to, relative to that proposal, what your height change is relative to the original proposal? And, and then tying to that, the, I know the bonus room, I don't remember the press proposal, but it also had a bonus room. But I see the bonus room and the number of rooms, and I, I get it, it can be an office or a craft room. It looks an awful lot like another room, so I'm imagining that'll be factored into, you know.
I don't think it goes to the septic, because it's not a bedroom, but it's, it's a, you can, I, I think the way I understand.
Again, with that bonus room relative, again, to the original proposal, how that all shakes out relative to that.
Wells, to the thirty-six units?
So the, the density total relative.
So, so I'll, I'll, let me talk to you about density. So at the two thousand, we gotta start with the two thousand and nine. So when we went back to two thousand and nine and they, and they talked about density, remember that the resort ordinance had just been passed. And the resort ord-, but they didn't use it because they didn't have to, because they were still just.
I don't remember in two thousand and nine, but yeah.
But the resort ordinance had just been passed, that came in late oh-six. And, but they kept doing it the same way, because this project was under the old system and modifications. And Newport Beach Club was gonna be proposed under the new. So as part of that, they, the zoning board wanted to see how the density in the SUP known as Carnegie would, at the time, would match the new ordinance. The new ordinance for density is one, two units per acre. It's two units per acre. They then looked at Carnegie Harbor Drive. Now again, that, that is the, the residences, there's twenty-two of those with five bedrooms. And there's one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-three, I'll, I'll get to it, but one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-seven square feet. And if you look at that individually, well below the density, obviously, but remember, they always looked at this collectively. Then there was the tower, which busts every math you know, because there's eighty units on two-point-three-four acres. Now that, obviously, is completely different. But remember, this came to be because there was an elephant in the room. The tower existed, but there were eighty units on that. They then looked at, but this is the overall, so that's, this is how we compare what was there to what was now. The Carnegie Suites, which were the villages, there were twenty-four of them on fifty-two thousand square feet. I'm sorry, the Suites buildings, those aren't even built, those were by the tower. The Carnegie Village, three-hundred-ninety-one-thousand, twenty-one units. And they added it all together. And they added it all together with the golf course and without the golf course. Without the golf course, there's 3,456,251 square feet, and at the time, that equated to 17,816 square feet per unit, even with the tower. Now, with the golf course, it is five times lower than Newport Beach Club, because you add 12 million square feet and basically no units. That drops it down to over 80,000 square foot a unit. And this math was all done when the total units for everything, the 80, the 20, the 16, the 36, equaled 194 total units. Since then, one of the units in the tower has been combined to drop one. Two of the villages have been combined, so that that drops two, so that takes three off. 36 goes down to 24, which takes eight off, and 12 aren't built, but even if you don't count those, it drops down 11. And I took the liberty of doing the math, and it would now be just about 18,898 square feet per unit, even with the tower. Now, it's better than it, it's better than it was. Uh, when Molly gets up here, she can tell you what the, uh, what the square footage of the building was as the lot 10 alone, and what the square footage of all these buildings are to lot 10 alone. And that might be something that concerns you, but there.
I, I don't, I don't mean to trick you or say, uh, hey, if it's more dense, I mean, it could be better in terms of character, I was just, you know, it kind of came across one way, and I'm not seeing how it works mathematically. I'm not saying it's not better, or it's a trick question, it's just.
No, I, I just.
I'm sure you're going to meet the ordinance for density on PRD. I, I just was curious, care, for what was previously approved under the multifamily.
I think.
Reality is, is it more dense or is it less dense? Is it higher or is it shorter?
But, I mean, that's a pure function of units per acre, it's less dense, because there's fewer units.
I think your question is, what was structure on the 6.4 as eight buildings? And what is structure on the 6.4?
Let's, let's call it a impervious horizontal and talk about height separately, just in.
We know the height.
Right, thank you.
When I, I think Molly will be able to. Do you have the, um, 2012 permit electronically there? Yes. Oh.
Well, you can clearly, does the number of bedrooms pose, there was a higher number of bedrooms?
Well, it was 36, it was 36 times three.
It was, the number of beds is down 24, I don't know, if that's the same for them.
But what I do have, let's take a break, what I do have is the application and approval of each of the units. I think what Molly says is, I don't necessarily have the 36, but I have the drawings that were given to 2009 for each of the three.
I mean, it's.
For each of the three bedrooms.
Space in between, some of them.
It's in between, but if each unit is smaller or the same size as the old units, then but for the space between the building, there's, there's less.
Yeah.
There's, and then if you get rid of all the eaves, or add all the eaves, I think that's the difference. Because there's 20 sets of eaves instead of one set of eaves. But the units are square footage-wise slightly smaller than the apartments, they're still three bedrooms. So overall, the square footage of structure is equal to or less.
Okay.
It takes out, there's less open space areas, because the open space is often between those, all true. But we.
I say, I, I haven't here, yes.
So I think, I think we're still trying to find the actual number, but I.
Uh, that, I mean, you just said the square footage is equal or less, that, that's part of the answer.
And, and you'll see.
And the, and the height profile is less.
Only real open space was between the two buildings. And now you can see there's some on the end and some here.
Okay.
Not a, not a, I, I personally don't think anyone stands up and applauds either one of them as, thank you for my four-acre open space, because they were both, you know, they were both pretty maximized on the lot itself. But one of the reasons, although we don't have the same numbers, one of the reasons we're not pitching 36 is because if we draw 36, we elim, we went more than that, and our goal was not to go more than that. So we had to pluck off units until we got down where 28 units took up the space and left some green space, not only private green space, hopefully between the buildings, but the public green space for, for everybody to use. Obviously, if you try to draw eight more on there, you're going to tell me, there was open space before and there's none now. But that was the goal then.
Um, and I, I guess I wanted to ask Ms. Hitchens if, um, if there's any advice or opinion that, that you had from this petition.
I do not have an advisory opinion on this specific application.
Okay.
Yeah, well, um, Ms. Hitchens, I just want to follow up, but anything specific as to the low to moderate income housing, is that anything specific to that issue?
My hands are sort of tied in this, as, as, um, Attorney Chappelle, um, clarified earlier. Um, our ordinance does not speak to it at, at the moment. Um, he could go back to the 2012 plan and, and build it without any units. We'd love to see some, some affordable units, since we're only at 2%, but, um, you know, there, there's nothing I can do at this point. Uh, we'd love for him to, to do it, but, um, do off-site, um, but it's, it's not required right now. I, in lieu of affordable units, I would really like to see the town and the applicant work together to, um, slow down the traffic on, on Willow. That's the only real, um, constant, um, problem that I hear from the neighbors.
And I think that would be part of any motion, mentioning the technical review committee recommendations, um, through the process to preliminary.
Yeah, and, and right on the record that we have agreed to cooperate with, and, and we'll send the letters to the department in, encouraging that. And again, I think a lot of people complain down there, because I may be one of them.
You're a speeder?
Well, no, not a speeder, I am.
A complainer.
No, I, but I got wife and grandkids walking up and down that road, so I am a complainer. It's not the volume of traffic. There's two things, when you, when, I got to be honest with you, I thought when Carnegie was built out, this was going to be, you know, a parade going up and down that road. Not a volume, it's that people that utilize the road drive quickly on a road that invites you to drive quickly, because it's a long straightaway. I don't know that those are Ferraris and Land Rovers as opposed to local kids' pickup trucks, but there is an issue on that road to control speed. Never going to put a speed bump when it was industry, because no one's going to bottom out trucks that are full with 40 tons of stuff, but it might not be as much of an issue now if the town wanted to put something like that in, because it's just not, it's just residential traffic, really, when you think about it, and boat trailers that you don't want to bottom out. That's the issue, is you got to make them, now, inside of Carnegie, they put, if you've been in there, they have kind of those yellow, uh, they, they have their own speed bumps that they put in that are, that are relatively short and low-profile, but they do the job.
I would, you know, basically being a wide road to having something down the middle that might have trees that kind of.
I, I was told by talking to one of the neighbors that at one point back in the day, they talked about, Peter DeSabry talked about putting an island in and stuff. I don't think, you know, it's public, I don't think we can do it, but we can certainly encourage and work with the town. Beautiful entrance for everybody would be, would be nice. Look at what the abbey has done, if you want to talk about what a few dollars in, in an entry can do for a road. They're not ours, but they're, they're large. Yeah. Do you have any more questions, Ms. Hitchens?
Yeah.
I, do you have any more people to speak, Mr. Chappelle?
I'd like to have Molly Titus from Dupree Engineering, because I think she has all the actual, it's really, I can just say, open to questions, because I know you heard it before, but those are all the specifics of density and, and distances from, uh, property lines, site lines on why Clamshell Road is safe. Um, and again, Mr. Godfrey will look at it from the comp plan and the neighborhood and say that, uh, I believe his testimony will be, this is not only more fitting, but generally better than larger apartment buildings. Town really doesn't have any large apartment buildings, the towers there, but other than Bayview with towers, and there's, there's a, just a stigma to those. Certainly with neighbors, we can do it one at a time.
Yeah.
Good evening, my name is George Brow, I live at 85 Willow Lane. About 30 years. I recall the Carnegie Abbey when it was built. I recall the old Kaiser Building when it was there, before it was taken down. Since the, uh, construction started at the Carnegie, there was an increased amount of traffic up and down that road. And, uh, it's, it's been exacerbated by the additional construction down there. Uh, now we're going to have 24 or 26 more units down there. I would like to, before construction starts down there, and in the construction spec, for each spec, mechanical, whatever they are, there are posted speed limit be put in that spec, so they're all aware of what the requirements are to drive on that road. And hopefully, we will get a speed sign on each side of the road that flashes the 25 mile an hour. I think that would slow the traffic down, because there are Maseratis, there are Corvettes, there are Porsches. And not just kids, there are people that are trying to get down there for tea times and get to work early. So that's all I have, I hope that you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
So I, I guess, uh, I don't know, Ms. Hitchens, if, like, speed limit mitigations, I don't know if that would be a responsibility that Hitchens or on a, a public or a town, town road.
I think we can certainly, I think we can certainly do it for construction, and kind of once you train, and once you train a puppy, sometimes the puppy just keeps being trained, but during construction, I think the, the development can put, get permits for our, to put our own temporary signs, construction interest, speed limit. Everybody that comes in, you know, a warning that this is a residential neighborhood, please drive slowly in and out of here. We certainly have that under our control. So to the extent we have it under our control, that's just great. I agree with you, in the long run, that, and sometimes I've seen the police department put that flashing thing there. We've seen that, and you, you drive and it says you're, you're speeding.
But it, but it's still the right audience to have the discussion, even if it's a town responsibility, so we would add that to the technical review discussion.
I agree.
Thank you.
Ms. Hitchens.
My name is Andrew Richter, and I have a residence in 8395 Willow Lane. And, uh, I live on Turnpike Avenue now, I moved from Willow Lane, because the traffic was so bad. I just couldn't take it anymore, I called the police more than 100 times, and the police labeled me as a nuisance caller. They brought down the radar, uh, little trailer, and one day we had two Maseratis blocked at 100 miles an hour using the radar to see how fast they could go down Willow Lane. And this was after the Carnegie Club, under different owners, let them know that there was going to be spirited driving on Willow Lane. Willow Lane is a town road from the very top out past the breakwater in the marina. There's an easement that goes all the way through, right through the middle of that marina. The club tries to restrict parking everywhere past the railroad tracks, per order of the Portsmouth Police Department. It's a public road. And so recently, they, but tried to redirect all the parking for the boat ramp up, off of Elliot Street, and I guess that got straightened out. But they, you know, similar things happening at, uh, Fessin Hill. Fessin Hill, there was a, uh, turnaround at the bottom, so that you could launch kayaks. Well, they just shortened it by 75 feet and put big giant boulders where you can't turn around your car. I don't know how somebody with a pickup truck can back down 300 feet of gravel road in between two sets of giant boulders and then take their kayak out and then drive back to the beginning and park, it's crazy, and plus, it's a lot longer of a walk to the water. So it's not just Carnegie trying to restrict access to the water. It's the, uh, Beach Club is also trying to restrict access to the water, and they do it by restricting the parking, which is common around Portsmouth, it's been, people have been doing that for years. The speeding is a problem, but not for me anymore, because Willow Lane had a certain quiet demeanor, where there's no traffic on the road, so the cars, no traffic at all. I'm going 90. And twice, I've helped people fix flat tires in front of my house, because they hit the railroad tracks so fast that they popped their tires on their Audi or their Ferrari, because they have such low-profile tires, and they made it a mile to my house before they stopped driving. And I went out there with my jack and helped them change a tire. So it's not kids and pickup trucks that are the problem. It's the people, and it's not the owners of Carnegie that's the problem, they know that there's a speed thing. It's all the guests, and what are we building now? 28 houses with 75 more cars of people that don't give a crap about the speed limit on, they are money, it's a luxury resort. They're never going to come back again, usually it's their friend's house that they're visiting, and they're, they're just going to come, and there's no way that the town of Portsmouth, if you call them, oh, we don't have the manpower. I can't tell you how many times I've heard that. So it is a problem, it's not going to go away, uh, speed bump might help, but you know, we can't ask them to patrol Willow Lane. But we can certainly have something that we can talk about before we approve this plan with a new set of developers, this is the third set of developers under this master plan, which threw away all our zoning laws. Every single one of them, setbacks, setbacks to water, uh, to waterlands, to, uh, wetlands. Distance from the front of your house to the street, distance in between heights. Every single zoning law that we have in this town, that every single developer follows, was thrown right out the window so these guys could make a ton of money. They couldn't fit another, a postage stamp in this development. It looks like it came from Arizona. The houses are 12, 15 feet apart, and they have like a combined setback with the two. There's nothing like Portsmouth, not even close. And yeah, it's going to be covered up by trees, and yeah, they have permission to do it. Well, I think that they need to be reined in a little bit, I have nothing against development. I am all for it, I'm a contractor, I know about development, and I know the rules that I have to jump through all the time if I want to build something. Well, we threw all the rules away for these guys, and now we're saying, okay, you know, build it, you guys have the rights, go ahead and build it, nobody's going to say no to them. And, you know, they have to understand that these are the problems that are going to come with this, we're still going to have speeders, we're still going to have parking problems, we're still going to have golf carts, like, what are they doing about the golf carts? I see little kids driving golf carts on Willow Lane all the time. They cross Willow Lane, they park on Willow Lane, they park right where you're, right in front of the no parking sign is the favorite spot to park, where the fire trucks have to turn around for going for proven silent. What's this, rules for you but not for me? It's really obnoxious, some of the stuff that goes on down there. And it's, you know, without us standing up here and saying any. And it's, you know, without us standing up here and saying anything, nobody hears about it. Well, you're hearing about it now. The police should give tickets to people driving golf carts. I mean, they have to cross Willow Lane to get from Carnegie to this group, and every single house that's down there has a golf cart in the driveway at one time or another. It's a golf resort. They, they, you know, that's the best way to get around. And I'm not, I don't have anything against golf carts. They're, they're slow and they're, you know, but that's not the laws in this town. You can't have a golf cart driving up and down Willow Lane. And so, you know, we look away when a lot of these things happen. We want these guys to be successful. They're, they're pinned a lot more into our school taxes than they're using. It's not a horrible development. Besides, they already got permission, they already passed every, you know, it's, it's tiring trying to keep up with their development. And so, you know, they're my neighbors, and I wish they would act more like good neighbors, but according to the DEM, they're one of the highest violators in the state. When they developed that, they had more than two hundred and sixty violations, and they continued to cut down all the shrubs in between their houses and the, and the water, so they get a good view. And they pay the eighteen hundred dollar ticket, and then they cut down shrubs again. So that's an ongoing problem with the whole of Carnegie, and has been and will be. And so also, they, you know, this project dumps all of their surface water from all those beautiful little Edward Scissorhands houses, right into a wetland that's in a floodplain. So what's, what's with that? Nobody even, you know, when, when this was first developed in two thousand and six, we all thought it was a joke. We didn't even come to the meetings, we were like, go for it. You know, it was just, it just didn't make sense. And slowly that it's picking up, and it's only taken three sets of developers in my lifetime, but it's happened, and it's going to continue to happen. I don't expect them to stop for anything that I say, that's for sure. But there, there's some things that have to happen. It has to comply with the town of Portsmouth sewer requirements. It has to have a hundred and fifteen gallons per bedroom of capacity for drainage in the leach field. When the system was first proposed, they turned the golf course into a leach field by using it for irrigation, based upon a model in Arizona. And so I wrote a big letter to the DEM, how much, I told them that they can't use my property as a sewer, but they did it anyway. And so I can't build a well. I didn't have a well, but it is what it is. I can't build one if I wanted to now, because, and so the laws have changed. And so it has to go before the DEM again, and it also has to pass the town ordinances. So the whole project, the, everything that's attached to that leach field has to get looked at by the tax assessor and the building inspector, and that includes this project, to count the number of bedrooms that they have, and make sure that it meets today's requirements. Unless, I'm a town septic inspector, so I'm pretty sure I know what the rule is. And I think that it should get a continuance based upon that request. Because I think that with the, with the original number of buildings that they have built so far, and everybody adding a spare room over the garage, is that they got a lot more bedrooms than that system was originally designed. Now, Ms. Court told me already that the system's performing well, the use is very limited. It doesn't change the law, doesn't change the zoning, doesn't change the ordinance that says, this is what you're required to have as a septic system. Whether or not it pollutes the bay, or they spray the sewage on the golf course, it's got to meet the guidelines. And so I talked to Todd Drake, the wastewater management, he said he has no clue what's down there. I talked to Leah, she said she needed more time to figure it out. She doesn't have an opinion on it, I don't either. I think that it should be discussed and figured out before we say, go for it. So all I have to say. Thank you.
That, that was a lot, and I obviously factually disagree with a bunch of that, not only as the petitioner's attorney, but as a butler. But I get it. But just to show you that a lot of that just isn't, I'm going to ask Lynn to come up and talk about the sewer. There is no variance. We are not trying to say we're not approved with sewer. This sewer treatment plant was approved as part of the special use permit, and clearly approved and monitored by DEM. It was approved originally a little bit on projections, because it's a resort, and the numbers, I believe she's going to tell you, turned out to be pretty conservative. But with that, if you can give us an overview of what's there, whether it's regulated, whether it's working, what the design is, and you were the engineer that had the thirty-six units approved.
Do I need to make a motion to continue this small, uh?
Yeah.
Qualification as a professional engineer? Motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Thank you. Lynn Small, Northeast Engineers, Sixth Valley Road, Middletown. Yes, I worked on this project since nineteen ninety-eight, when I started at Northeast, and the septic system has morphed over the years. The butler is correct, in two thousand and three, we did an application with the DEM where we wrapped the entire development into one of the first, or the first privately-owned reclaimed wastewater systems in the state. We have a wastewater treatment plant that's located at the end of Valley Road, sorry, not Elliot Street. It is designed currently for a capacity of ninety thousand gallons a day. It does have the ability to expand up to a hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day. Adjacent to the wastewater treatment plants, we have installed septic system areas and reserved septic system areas. We also have a large leach field area over near the maintenance bond, which is at the end of Depot Street. And then, you're right, it goes into the wastewater reuse system, and it gets irrigated onto the golf course during, in the middle of the night. We did a lot of research and worked with the executives at the DEM to get this project through. It is wildly successful. The resort development, if you looked at all the numbers, your average stay historically has been about thirty days a year for each resident. And most of that stay is during your peak, your peak use is during your summer months. We did an analysis that made sure we had enough of capacity or the need for the irrigation of the system during that peak use. And then during the off-season use, should everybody show, or should your, you usually get only about ten to twenty percent of the people show up, we made sure we have the capacity in the leach field to infiltrate it into the ground. So there's about, I think it's fifty thousand or thirty-five thousand gallons per day of leach field actually constructed. The max that we've seen at that plant, and we get reports every single month, not just me, the state gets reports every single month, there is someone at that wastewater treatment plant, I think it's three days a week required by the rules, and I think it may be more while we're using the wastewater reuse. It is very monitored, and I believe they get the information for the activity of the plant at their office, so it's not even like they have to be there to monitor it. But the max we've gotten for the actual flow is before the project actually take, took full occupancy. I think it was back when like President Bush and President Clinton came, way back, way back when. But we never reached that high flow. During your winter months, about around now, you're probably getting about six to eight thousand gallons a day on a weekend. In the, in the summertime, we've never gotten over about twenty thousand if there's a full-blown event. With that said, in the permit for wastewater reuse, there's a trigger that says if we should get an average flow of thirty-two thousand gallons in two consecutive months, we have to install more leach field. So there's, there's checks and balances all over the place, because we don't want to see that system fail. The state certainly doesn't want to see that system fail, and the people that reside there definitely don't want to see that system fail. The irrigation system, because you realize that we can only irrigate at night, because no one wants to accidentally get irrigated, even though it's clean. We have fourteen, twelve or fourteen, twelve thousand gallon tanks, also underground. These tanks are used to store the reclaimed water, the cleaned wastewater, so that we can store it during the day, and then spray it at the golf course during the night. Right now, with all of the constructed projects or phases that we have out there, the system has a permitted flow, I believe, of fifty-two thousand, somewhere around fifty-two thousand gallons a day, where, like I said, the plant has a capacity for ninety thousand gallons a day. There's only two more areas where they could develop next to the marina, which is a very small lot, so you wouldn't get much out there, and I think they've even reduced the intended scope there now. And then the grass area where the sales center was, formerly had twenty-four three-bedroom homes on it, or apartments. That permit seems expired, so that won't be constructed, and I don't think there's any intent to get that kind of density out there any longer. So I don't know what will go there, but that's the last piece of land that's left. As far as if everything's built and nothing's used, I can tell you that every, I'm working on one of the last two homes, or three homes in the residences, the village or the cottages around the pond, when you first drive into the gate, that's one hundred percent built out now. And the tower is obviously one hundred percent. I think they have twelve units left to sell. Do you know if that's accurate?
Down to about six.
Six, yeah, yeah. And the heights is fully built.
Built out.
So the occupancy is nearly one hundred percent for everything that's already been constructed.
I will say, the only, although the system was signed, but everything that was approved, including these thirty-six units and the twenty-four units called the suite building, those are the only residences that I know that aren't built. Those twenty-four were actually put back in grandfathered. I know the intent isn't to build them right now, but the system was sized and is adequate if they were built.
Yeah.
And if these thirty-six units were built.
Correct.
And if it's done for thirty-six units that are three bedrooms, and these units are three bedrooms, and real, not dens and planned, but real three bedrooms, then certainly mathematically and every reason we believe, that twenty-eight units would use less gallons than thirty-six units.
Correct. I mean, when we had the maximum density for all the developers that have owned it, because we worked on it since its start, for the maximum density for the entire project with all the developers, every use that was at the yacht club, every use that was at the chateau suites, you never reached that ninety thousand gallons a day. We've always been below, and we have the ability to increase the size of the plant.
Do you have an opinion whether it was designed adequate to meet the needs as approved, even though as approved is greater than what we're trying to do today?
I believe, yes, the, the septic system and wastewater reuse system have the capacity to handle the flow that we would propose to that. We will be subject to a DEM permit, so it will be reviewed through state, but we do have the capacity within the system, based on my opinion and continued review of the function of the system. I believe it will handle it fine.
And we should say, Andy, in fairness, said he wanted to see that this was reviewed by both DEM and Coastal. In the town, well, this is the town, this is one of the reviews for the town, including reserving the right to discuss this again with the fire department and with the Department of Public Works, but it also has to go back to Coastal and back to DEM. But as you know, you can't even go there until we have a plan here. That's one of the steps. That's.
And I just want to add one small piece, I'm not sure if you care, but the comment regarding having the sprinkler systems have the reclaimed water and impacting the adjacent properties, when we were working with Russ Shattenoff at, at DEM for reusing, for using the wastewater reuse system, they forced us to move those sprinkler heads in from the perimeter of the project. So that shouldn't, you, you shouldn't have any spray or even wind-blown spray, because they're like, I can't remember the exact dimension, but that was particular concern. They made us show all of those sprinkler heads.
And you water fairways and greens and not rough, the golfers understand that's in from the neighbors. There's no fairways that are running parallel with neighbors that don't have the sufficient. And in Carnegie, if anybody played it, there's substantial woods on all the neighbors.
There's, there's plenty of separation, and that system has a hundred percent UV treatment, so the, there's no bacteria once it's left the plant in the wastewater. You could drink it.
I'm not taking. I'm not doing that.
So, Ms. Small, you were, you were hiding behind that easel on the sign, so I didn't see that you were still here for this follow-on petition, so Mr. Chappelle, thanks for bringing her in.
Thank you. And she was here, she was here for us, too.
Right, alright.
I did ask her to be here. And I have another engineer that you've also qualified in the past, as an expert, I can ask you to do it again, Molly Titus, please.
I'll qualify Molly Titus as a professional engineer?
Yes.
Dupree Engineering.
Good evening, everyone. It's Molly Titus from Dupree Engineering. We've taken care of the site civil design on this project. Now, we've had the benefit of the layout from the studio, creating this neighborhood feel, and we've designed the stormwater system. We will be taking care of the on-property sewer lines and design of that, and then connecting into the treatment plant as detailed by Lynn. Our major focus on the design is stormwater management. We've shown collection systems in the proposed private driveways, and as mentioned by the butler, we are discharging onto the neighboring lot. We have an easement on to these lots. We will be crossing West Shore Road. There's existing piping under the railroad that has already been installed to accommodate this development.
For those of you that were on the beach club petition, you'll note that on their plan was this propensity done in there. That was approved, subtracted from their development, and when it was pitched, it was said to you, there's going to be that future area here, there's going to be an easement given to the Beach Club, it was signed by Velocity a while back when it was under receivership, Culver and P O P had to obviously do that under the railroad. That portion is going to be finalized.
Constructed.
Constructed, and also has to go back to DEM.
CRM C.
CRM C, for further review of the design.
So the preliminary design that you see on these plans has actually been sized, and you know, a rough capacity analysis has been done on the piping systems, and it is currently submitted with CRM C for a preliminary determination. That review by them will vet the stormwater connection, the discharge into the wetlands, the confirmation of the discharge with adjacent to a floodzone area. Additionally, we cannot complete the final design, as Court had mentioned, without a master plan type approval from this board to give CRM C the ability to review the full engineering.
Need to go to Coastal, and part of an application is that the town signs off that we're actually improving. So we have zoning improvements for thirty-six units, and normally it only takes a master plan, just that we're already at, so conditional preliminary approval, subject to all the conditions that they want, but that allows us to get there, allows you to get another look at both, we're probably going to get another look at the, at the drainage, because we can't show it to Coastal and DEM finally sign off on it. We expect that we design with Coastal what we'll get, but there's always changes, as you know, and a lot of times we have to come back and say, hey, remember the fish, DEM changed it, you have any issues with us, and we will be back either way. We clearly have the fire department that he wants, at least right now, the suggestion is that the, despite what the ordinance may say, we're at twenty feet, and he had concerns with parking, and we're trying to address that with what we've already talked about.
If this thing, that's the second, previous plan road was wider, this round, you're making the road wet?
No.
No.
Previous plan was plenty. Previous plan was plenty. The advisory was plenty. It's, and look, if I'm the new sheriff in town and I have a different opinion, I have a right to have a different opinion at a, at a technical review committee, and we have the right to try to address them. The re, I just, in defense to these people that have worked so hard, the reason why they weren't necessarily prepared to address that on Friday afternoon is because it had already been approved by special. I believe three times, the fire department had to sign off on that between the PUCs and then the advisory and the last time we were here. So it's, it's okay to, to ask us to do more. I apologize for not solving the riddle since Friday. And what I said was rather than slow that down, is that like we make things conditional on Coastal and conditional on DEM? It's conditional on either the fire department signing off on what we do, because originally we had no problem with it, and we didn't have to make sure. Or in the alternative, we'll be back to say, hey, Jeremy, I'm sorry. It may be, we'll be back to say, you want us to x your sidewalk, the design review and the architect want? What do you want? Are you okay with twenty feet? I'm trying, we never put you in a position to wrestle with your fire chief. So we want a chance to talk to him. And it was, he didn't plug the door in any very reason. It was more about whether we described lots and those things. And I'll, I'll ask this. Given our conversation with the fire department, we're comfortable that we have some alternatives and some discussions that may very well come, uh, with a full approval and a consensual, uh, uh, design back to this board, right?
Yes, absolutely. He was very amenable to, you know, alternate solutions, not necessarily widening the road, you know, spare areas.
Ryan Woodhead, Department of Public Works, he had a number of comments that he had specifically about some piping.
Yes.
And whether it was, you know, under the road or in different areas. And those discussions led us to believe that we could also have a minimal discussion with them. Subject to either them signing off or this board, uh, you know, having the right to reject, right?
Correct, yeah. His conditions were easy, and we will be making those changes.
So there were some changes that aren't here because of Friday, but it's still subject to those. The same way it's subject to Coastal, subject to condo documents approved by normally, um, your solicitor. Remember, this is part of the resort. It's all tied in. There's the sewer agreement, there's the maintenance agreement. There's the, some things are common, some things are unique for this neighborhood. We're not inside the deal.
So the retention detention, I'm not sure which one it is, pond, right?
That is a sand filter, yeah. So water quality treatment.
So, oh, that's, that's not for water.
Well, the water will be directed there first before it discharges. It's only three feet deep. Um, we would probably propose screening in a vegetative manner before fencing, if that was amenable. I mean, we can. It doesn't hold water. It filters it, so it flows in.
So if you have a storm for, for like a day or two, you can have three feet of water. So that's, that's.
Just because I don't know, is there a, there a difference between a retention pond, a detention pond, and the sand filter quality that you've done, or are they all synonymous?
Yeah, detention is serving to hold water and meter it out slowly. The sand filter filters the water through as it comes in.
So in each neighborhood, you'd have to check the plans and see whether that, because they look.
They do.
Well, yeah, I would just say, like, if, if it could, though, for like even a day, hold three feet of water, that's.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we haven't gotten to.
So I would just, I would just.
We will back that. Do you have any other questions? I, I, some things that we just didn't cover, other than roadway, we did go over all the radius of turns. We did go over the internal traffic patterns. We did go over the setbacks, and there were no concerns as to that. It was just whether or not extra spill over parking narrowed the streets in a way that may have issues with the fire department getting in there on a busy day.
Correct. The roadway as designed can accommodate the largest new fire truck. We run the turning movements through all directions, in and out of the site, so. As shown, but yes, if there's excess parking, we're going to look at that as well.
And did you have the opportunity that the thirty-six units that were approved before, obviously also had surface water drainage that had to be contained under certain rules and regulations.
Yes.
Monitored by EDM and Coastal.
Yes.
My opinion is that most of the rules in the world have become more stringent since two thousand and six than less stringent. So by definition of the rules, if passes all the new rules as designed, it will not be worse or equal to the last system. It will be better than the last system.
Correct. We'll meet the current regulations for the site for stormwater quality.
Because regulations are a little more strict. We'll meet the standard of change in our ordinance. If this is better than.
Yes.
So. What is it that you would. Yeah, when you have the approval.
So.
There's so many gifts.
Well, so there's a. What you're here for is to look at the development plan as certified, which was before you for thirty-six units, and to pass judgment on whether this change um, can be endorsed by you. And the fact and decision that I see in your paragraph ten is that it meets the criteria of generally a special use permit like the other one did, and that would be Nate Godfrey about compatibility with the neighborhood and things that I'll put on very quickly next. And also that the new design is as fitting with your ordinance or more fitting than original, than, that you like it better, Bill, really, when you think about it, or that it is no, it's no more intrusive. And that has to be to the town as a whole and to neighbors and whatever standard. I, I included paragraph ten in your package, so you can actually read it. But it basically, I'm paraphrasing, but it says, it's not going to be worse, not going to be more intense. Just the fact that this has gone from a resort when it was done under the special use permit, there were so many variances because your resort ordinance gave you a lot more power. It didn't have, Mr. Richter's right. It said, hey, these resorts, we are looking for concentrated road systems and concentrated housings and the amenities. And we don't get credit for the golf course, but the truth is, we get credit for the golf course. We have three hundred acres of open space because of this resort. Now, I don't think the abbey was going to sell it, but the truth is, never going to, it's always going to be open now. And as a whole, is this a better project or equal to? I think that's the standard. If you find that fact, you can pass judgment on it. I think you could have done that tonight, and I think you can with conditions. And the conditions, because I'm trying to be fair to Leah, who I had discussions with at technical review, with it, rather than just saying yes and not seeing it again, we reserve, you reserve the right to see the fire department changes. You reserve the right to see the public works changes. And you obviously reserve the right to see R I D O T, if it's something with the tracks or the coastal or DEM, which would include, you know, if DEM comes down tomorrow and says the septic, as we know it, can't have any more units, well, then you would get the chance to see that. But with those caveats, we just ask that you pass it on to the next. Now, time-wise, it'll probably be, I think Dennis told me, at best ninety days, maybe as much as six months before you come back because we have to get in front of Coastal DEM and get all the permits. Once they sign off with modifications, they'll come back to you, I would say akin to a final from a preliminary, and saying, you know, those concerns that you reserved the right to look at, here they are, and you bless us tonight on a different note. That's, I don't know how to put that in the form of a motion, quite frankly.
Any, you want to ask anything from the audience? Better double check.
I do have Nate Godfrey that I think, just to preserve a record, he's here. We paid him to prepare, so I'm going to have him speak quick, but I can have him talk to you.
New Stafford Court, Cranston, Rhode Island, seven hundred and twenty-two.
Mr. Godfrey has also been qualified a number of times as an expert before this board. I ask that you requalify him.
I'm sorry, he's an expert in what?
Uh, real estate.
Okay. Make the motion to qualify Mr. Godfrey as an expert in real estate.
And Nate, just to kind of keep it moving quicker, I'm going to ask you some questions. First of all, you are the owner of Newport Appraisal Group, licensed appraiser, testified a number of times and many times just in this room. Is that right?
All of that, uh, two terms on the Narragansett Planning Board. I appreciate what you do. Two terms on the zoning board, two terms on the state appraisers board.
So.
No term limits, I like that.
I'm a believer in term limits, yes.
Now, normally in a special use permit, we have was the A two J criteria. But that criteria is also really in the plan during development. And even though we're already certified, we get a chance to look at this again. So the resort district is part of the zoning ordinance and therefore part of the comprehensive plan, is that right?
Correct.
And the resort district in being part of the plan, this fits in with the resort district ordinance, is that right?
It does, yes.
Specifically, this very petition was used as the example in front of the council as to why to give this resort district the ability to rule on this petition.
So this application or this petition, comp plan, ordinance, and planned unit development. Yes, sir.
Now, are you familiar with the, uh, area known as Equidna?
I've been very involved with it over the years.
And this piece, where is this piece in relation to the rest of the resort? And what are the abutters of this piece? Who are the abutters of this?
Come down the street, uh, hit the railroad tracks. This is across the tracks on the right-hand side. Clamshell Road on the frontage Willow and then West Shore.
So on the east, it's abutted by the Clamshell Road, which maintains its, uh, its width. Is that right?
Within the railroad track.
Railroad tracks, and that is also like fifty-foot wide easement before residential houses on the other side of it. Is that right?
Correct.
With, uh, buffer and vegetated screening on both sides of the railroad track. Is that right?
Riprap and screening, yep.
And on to north, it's West Shore Road. There's a sixty-foot buffer proposed. That's that area that's heavy, heavily tree.
Correct, yep.
Other side of West Shore Road, there are no neighbors. That's what we call Lot Two of the Newport Beach Club, which this board made undeveloped or an open space.
Heavily wooded, yep.
On the west is Elliott, which is the road that has one gentleman's house, Mr. Ferris, I believe,'s house on it, and also the treatment plant on the other side.
To the west, correct, yeah.
And then Elliott ends on solar farm.
Correct.
And what we call Lot Five, which is in the lower lot that, uh, has no building on it and is part of the Equidna Club properties, use the parking.
Parking and trailer storage.
And then there's the old, also kind of on the north, is one of the old pieces of the electric company that was once a transformer pad when Montauk Point was.
Okay, yeah.
Invaded, correct?
Yep.
So, other than the houses across the road, across the railroad tracks, and over the hill on Elliott, there's no real neighbors to this except Carnegie or the Equidna Club itself. Is that right?
Correct and fair. You, you've got the club on the other side of Willow, and you've got the parking behind it. It's well, well-isolated.
Directly across Willow are the cottages, which are a portion of the Equidna Club that are similar to what is proposed, meaning they are single-family homes, not generally connected. And they are close proximity to the buildings and packed around you, the pond or the road system. Is that right?
With more water feature, yep.
And based on all of that, do you feel that this development is compatible, not first with the immediate area?
I believe it's compatible with the club, and it's opposed as single-family and two-unit dwellings. So, yeah, it's compatible with the area.
You're familiar with Fort Smith?
Hmm.
Are you familiar with our two-hundred-foot, twelve-unit apartment buildings in Fort Smith?
I am, yeah.
Are there any other than this one?
Uh.
Other than, other than the old one that was proposed?
Uh, Middle Road. Is there one on Middle?
But generally speaking.
Right, very few.
More compatible with residential areas and resort districts than large connected apartment buildings.
I would say that's true, yes.
And you've seen the traffic and the roadway system and the layout, the design, the open space in both the old and the new. Do you have any reason to believe that from a real estate point of view, this development as proposed is less compatible with the ordinance or more obnoxious to a neighborhood than that which has already been approved?
I think the discussion tonight has gone a long way to ensure an improvement with discussion of fire department trying to attempt to maintain sidewalks. I, I think that's tremendous. The standard there is improve or remains the same. There's no diminution to the neighborhood as a result of this proposal, reduction in units.
And as to the normal A two J, uh, criteria, compatible with the neighborhood, don't create a hazard, solar rights of others, have you viewed those criteria?
Appropriate green space and plantings compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, I believe, is absolutely spot on. Health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood is considered. Again, going back to sidewalks and biotrac access. I'm a volunteer firefighter. I drive an engine. I know what's involved with coming onto that spot where you don't want to have that truck. And I believe this is engineered in a manner to, uh, alleviate that. And you've got your, your fire department looking at it further, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Um, your other standards, solar, appropriate green space, appropriate scale and density. Resorts is where you find this mixture of housing styles, frankly. Golfers, if you've ever been down to Cape to New Seaberry, a big resort started in the sixties. They've got density and scale of all sorts, and it's a terrific place. And, uh, I think this is, as I view that, this is very consistent with that sort of forward planning. I, I like that design where there's reduced setbacks, to be honest with you. I like, I like the feel of it as a neighborhood, so I'm comfortable with it. Sure. Nathan Godfrey, Newport Appraisal Group, two-twenty-one Third Street in Newport. And that's Admiral's Gate Tower. You're welcome. Thank you.
I believe that's all I have. Unless there's abutters online. I do want to apologize to the butters because I, you hate getting certified mail. And when everybody gets certified mail, we got more calls about what's the certified mail for than we did about complaining. And anybody that got a letter here, I actually, they, there's two letters you don't want. One from a certified law, certified mail, and one from a lawyer. So I actually wrote zoning on them so that people looked at them a little better. But a lot of people had to wake up to green cards.
There's nobody online.
And anybody in the audience?
No.
Uh, I'll make a, uh, let me see here, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the modification of the development, a lot ten, part of the Equidna Country Club Land Resort Development to reduce number of residential units from thirty-six to twenty-eight. As consistent with, um, ordinance and meet, meeting and exceeding criteria previously approved. And incorporating, um, consideration that they continue to need incorporate comments early through the design review process by the technical review board. Including public safety as it relates associated both both with stormwater lid, surface water runoff. And safety associated with speed limit mitigations. Both those in control of the petitioner during after construction. As well as discussion by the TRB of public safety associated with roads that may be a responsibility of the town. I think that's it.
See how it seems to all that.
I mean, I think there's further conditions that follow.
I think it's subject to obviously the approval of DEM, CRM C and a sign off or return to the board by Public Works and Fire Department.
Which, okay, so sure, subject to approvals by a DEM, CRM C and signature responses by, did you say DOT?
I think DOT DOT is always there because of the easement that we already have and then I I would add them.
Uh, any signature approvals by BPW, that might be in fire department. Probably also associated with the tech review board, but. All right.
I think that they all are.
We cover it?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
No, no, I I don't need a discussion. I was in second too.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry for keeping you late.
Thanks.
We have to redo the like Paul.
Number seven. They're here. Number seven here.
They leave Leah, you know?
Mr. Galvin?
Ap applicant number seven?
Mr. Galvin saw the the agenda items ahead of him and he high tailed it out.
Okay.
He asked for a continuance to the next month's.
Okay.
Docket.
Okay. All right.
Take the motion to continue.
So we got a motion by Mrs. Tibbetts to continue.
Meeting June what day?
Fourteenth.
Sure. Make a motion to continue the Briarwood Lane petition as the first agenda item to the meeting on June.
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion made. Say any discussion? All in favor to say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. That is all that's on the agenda. So, oh, I'm sorry, monthly status report. Does he even place on file? Do you have a motion to do that? Second. Any discussion on the motion? Take a vote on the motion. All favors say aye. Aye. I think that's it. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Mr. Harding, second. Ms. Wilson, all favors say aye. Aye.
God.
No discussion. I think that was just one yours.